Copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the table outside as well as on our website. There is also an automatic external defibrillator that is available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia? Commissioner Morgan is absent.
And he'll just be late.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Rogers and Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, November 7th, 2023. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, December 5th, 2023, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax roll or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue. Omaha, 68132. A few weeks ago and just before the war started over there in Israel, I was up here talking about asking why we should have tax exemptions for an Islamic center. And I'd like to present something to answer back to what was said to me that day. That I was Islamophobic. I was hateful and I was guilty of hate speech. This is a booklet by Robert Spencer that is a very renowned, famous author in terms of the religion differences between Islam and Christianity. I'm going to present it to our friend in the Assessors Department. I want to read just a couple of things real quick, though. In fact, I'm going to give it to Dan for you people. Hopefully, it will help re-educate you to what I was saying and what I was not saying for clarity. But this talks about the term Islamophobic. And who uses it most often? And unfortunately, you're not going to like this. But the most often used term is by people on the left, such as the Center for American Progress. And the whole idea of that campaign of declaring people like myself Islamophobic is to destroy the West. That is the goal of Islam. Islam is a political system. I did not say Muslim people were a political system. They are subject to a political system which is evil. So I want to hopefully have that discussion in front of the other citizens at this center, along with the discussion, presentation regarding the elections. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda?
Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk. I just feel like it needs to be stated for the record that the organizations that we're referring to a couple of weeks ago, they qualify for the exemption, qualify for the exemption. So there's really no argument to be made. They qualify. They were not given special treatment. They were treated like any other religious organization. So, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to resolutions. There are two resolutions, D and E. There is no need for executive session. If there's no one here for D or E, we can have a motion to approve and adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Next, we'll move to the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Friend? Commissioner Garcia? Commissioner Morgan is currently absent, but will, should be here later. Commissioner Rogers? Madam Chair.
Present. Item one, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, October 17th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Sorry about that. Commissioner Kavanaugh? Motion passes five to zero.
Next, or citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda?
My name is Ed Felberdy. Citizen, Douglas County, 521 North 38th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I have previously distributed to the county attorney and to every board member, this particular document is my opinion on the risk benefit analysis of the project known as the jail mental health facility for $30 million. I've talked to this many times in the past and that was delivered to you to kind of give you a document to hold and study whether I've got the law right or not. And I will tell you that after my 60 years of being a lawyer, I am an expert at one thing, and that is analyzing a client's wishes and plans and advising them of the risk and benefits of winning, losing, tying, or changing course, settling, to make sure that they are advised of the risk and can avoid the risk. Now, after all this time that I've spent on this, and not just that written thing, but it's a written thing, you can see for itself what my opinion is. But my opinion is to you that the risk of clawback by the federal government on this particular project, jail slash mental health facility, runs 80 to 100%. That means a federal clawback or some other area of clawback that you're exposed to would be four out of five times, five out of five times. My analysis, which you have follows, the ARPA Act controls, Congress knows what it says, means what it says, intends where building or capital expenditures are called for. And it says so expressively for some major projects. You could see 42 U.S. Code, 801 to 805. Two, where the act doesn't want building, capital expenditures, the final rule will say so. And it has, no new jails. And the county attorney in Deloitte and I have been telling you that, no new jails. Where the intent of the act is to alleviate the suffering that comes from the pandemic, cash flows, capital expenditures allowed are very narrow and not, not very generous with cash at all. That would be the obvious ones, small businesses, keep jobs open even though they don't have the business, rent relief. And fortunately, the overview and the final rule has spoken directly, directly to medical facilities. And it says they're small or if they're to be approved, they're talking about ambulances. They're talking about expansions of ICUs, expansions of emergency rooms or special equipment, all needed to respond to that rush that we did see and it continues because we still have COVID and the respiratory stuff with us as hospitalizations. They talk to that. They don't talk about building a new facility for $30 million. They've got to be under an emergent care situation. They've got to be responsive somehow to COVID. And that's, that's kind of the collection of what the final rule says to you and the overview. I give you the sites in the paper. Now, my conclusions are, as a jail, ipso facto, ARPA won't allow it. As a medical facility, ARPA won't allow it. The county attorney is unable to show you a path to how you can get past the problems presented that I have shown you. And they have not taken up my challenge to show you. The board has time, and what you ought to do is form a committee of the interested shareholders. That'd be 42nd Street, that would be the jail. That would be the real hands-on experts, like your top psychiatrist down there, Sid Colver, as I know, and people in the community who could be helped by various programs. And think at the jail, think at the, think at the 42nd facility. Enhance the mental health labor force. More of them, pay them better, get them filled out if you have weaknesses and address with ARPA money, stuff that goes hand-on to helping the mentally ill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners. I'm not sure this is the right place. I would ask the inquiry before I would speak at this point. On administrative services, B, I see no, it's a resolution. So I don't know whether the public would be invited after that consideration to speak or whether I should speak now.
No, I would wait till that item comes.
And there'll be public info. Okay, oh wait, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to the report from our Director of Corrections. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. Before you, you have my report for the month of October. Following the third month of the fiscal year, we were, I should say fourth month, I'm sorry, $1,336,728 under budget. There was $654,671 spent on overtime in October. This is a decrease, but it is still a high number. We increased staffing due to renovations being completed in our highest security housing unit. And we did spend an exorbitant amount of resources on one very high-risk individual. And approximately $900,000 in bond payments were processed. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections and Reentry Services. The sanctioned center and transitional discharge center placed a total of 22 individuals in community corrections and saved a combined 60 bed days in the jail. Work release admitted 18 individuals, house arrest admitted 50. The reentry assistance program, or RAP, admitted 22 individuals. And our staff implemented a GED tutoring program utilizing peers who had already achieved or had their education in the RAP program. Reentry services and therapeutic communities, 68 individuals were admitted to therapeutic community housing units and one individual received a GED. Pretrial services, there were 264 individuals placed on pretrial release. Over the course of the month, 1,262 people were supervised on pretrial release. Of those, 470 participated in 24/7 sobriety. And of those individuals on pretrial release, 160 were supervised via GPS monitors. That saved theoretically 3,758 jail bed days, which has a value to Douglas County of $450,960 in reduced detention costs. As I've mentioned in my previous couple of reports, there is a lot of expanded data in enclosure number two in our charts, which charts our graphs, that chart our programming performances. So I encourage you to review those. Enclosure number three, Compliance. Our American Correctional Association audit began on October 30th and was completed on November 3rd. Both the jail and community corrections passed with flying colors and with high praise from the auditors. Both achieved 100% on the mandatory standards, while the jail achieved 98% and community corrections achieved 99% on the non-mandatory standards. To be accredited, facilities must achieve 100% on the mandatory standards and 90% of the non-mandatory standards. The final step for our accreditation process, our hearing in front of the Commission on Accreditation will take place at the ACA Winter Conference in Washington, DC in January of '24. I wish to commend Acting Captain for Compliance, Chris Sweeney, and all of our staff for a job very well done. Enclosure number four, Personnel. Eight officers below the rank of sergeant left employment in October, some of which were individuals who did not successfully complete training. One sergeant resigned in October and another retired. 24 officers have, but will graduate from the academy on November 3rd, and they just finished their field training. As of October 31st, we were 100% staffed among correctional officer ranks. We are targeting January 8th of 2024 to begin our next academy. Two officers were promoted to correctional officer two. Congratulations to John Johnson, Jeremy Hicks, and Glenn Yankee, who were promoted to the rank of sergeant. And congratulations to Justin Anderson, who was promoted to the rank of lieutenant. Congratulations again to Chris Sweeney, who celebrated 25 years of service. And congratulations to Sergeant Travis Sears, former FOP president, on his retirement and to Captain Mary Early on her retirement. I wish to thank them both for their service and dedication to Douglas County. Enclosure number five, Population. There were 1,328 admissions, that is a slight increase from the previous month. There were 1,380 releases. Our high count was 1,132 and our low count was 1,036. Our average daily population was 1,084. That's a decrease of 45. I do want to point out that this is the impact that you see from us doing a much more comprehensive pretrial release program that despite the fact that more people came to jail, fewer people stayed in jail. There were 82 custodial sanctioned bed days, that is an increase. The US Marshal population decreased, the felony pretrial population decreased, the misdemeanor pretrial population actually increased. Probation violations remain stable. 19% of our population were between the ages of 18 and 24. 67% of our population were minorities. 16% of our population were female. And 17% of our population were homeless or nearly homeless. Enclosure number six, Medical. There were 1,228 intake screenings and 335 health and physical assessments. Inmates were sent out 37 times for emergency medical care. Eight of those were by 911. There were nine hospital admissions, which resulted in 38 days of hospitalization. There were 56 specialty off-site medical appointments. Influenza vaccination clinics were also offered to both staff and incarcerated individuals. Enclosure number seven, Mental Health. There were 169 initial psychiatric assessments. There were 201 initial mental health assessments. There were 94 mental health infirmary placements, which are primarily our suicide precautions. There were 158 individuals placed on drug and alcohol withdrawal protocols. There were four referrals to the Board of Mental Health and two referrals or transfers, I should say, to long-term psychiatric facilities, namely the Lincoln Regional Center. 47% of our population was diagnosed with a mental illness. This is the highest or second highest number that I can recall during my 10 years director. Enclosure number eight, Security Operations and Honor Guard. There were three deployments for our crisis negotiation team. Issues addressed included an agitated individual who dismantled a sink, an individual who refused to leave his cell, and round-the-clock deployment beginning October 20th to work with a highly volatile individual with numerous self-harm and violent outbursts. Our CERT team, our Correctional Emergency Response Team, was deployed four times. One was in conjunction with the CNT deployment, that being the individual who needed basically round-the-clock resources. Other issues addressed, moving our highest security inmates back to our housing unit with, had completed renovations, and placement of an agitated individual in a restrained chair and a cell extraction to provide, in order to provide medical care. There were six searches of housing units conducted. Contraband recovered, included modified items for tattooing, modified items to create a spark, and paper that was suspected to be contaminated with K2. Our Honor Guard was not deployed in October. Enclosure number nine, Staff Development, Wellness, and Retention. There were 13 individuals interviewed for correctional officer positions. There were 83 applications received. Mental health first aid for all staff who haven't previously had this training began in October. Narcan training will occur in November and already has begun for all correctional officers, and they will all be outfitted with Narcan on their duty belts as they've been trained. Nine staff members utilized the wellness and retention office for assistance for the first time, and 34 staff members were referred to the peer support team. And three staff members were referred to external mental health resources. We have posted for staff who are interested in becoming a part of our training instructors, or excuse me, becoming part-time training instructors, as well as our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. Nutrition and financial planning were added to our recent academy and will be offered as part of an annual wellness training for all staff beginning in 2024. This is part of a goal to have a full day of wellness-related training and annual in-service training beginning next year. Other noteworthy items, work on the facility-wide safety project actually did approach an important milestone. The last of our largest housing units is currently having the safety upgrades installed. Though I was informed this morning, there is some issues with the netting that may delay us reopening that. While there are some smaller units on the old side of the jail that are still to come, we will gain efficiency by having smaller units closed rather than larger units. And this will cut our daily operational staffing costs. Additionally, safety enhancements were completed on our highest security unit in October, and we were able to move inmates back into that unit. I want to conclude my report by acknowledging the work of our staff. They faced significant challenges and dangers during the past month. And several were assaulted in one way or another. And they do amazing work, day in and day out. The American Correctional Association auditors shared many complimentary comments about their professionalism, the cleanliness of our facilities, and the quality of our programs. While the ACA auditors were only here for a week, the impression left with them is earned each day as it would be impossible to maintain a facility as large as ours and have the culture we have without their dedication on a daily basis. And I'm ready for your questions.
Thank you, Mike. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Regarding the average daily population, which I think you indicated is 1,084 for the last month, that would have been the month of November.
October.
October. Down 45 from the previous month of September.
Correct.
Right? Okay. And the look back in here, and I appreciate you giving us these because it gives us real perspective, on page 38, shows the the year-to-date low was actually in April. That was 1,012. And so, yeah, we've had slight diminutions in the last, actually, couple of months. But that, going back six months, was actually the year's low and it went up after that. I, I just point this out because you referenced that the programs are diminishing the population. This isn't a total even.
You're right. There will still be seasonal cyclical changes. We just hopefully reset the average a little bit.
Here's the point, at the end of the year, and I guess that would be in January, where you give us the year-end report. If you could show us that year-over-year, going back a few years, I think we would get a better, you know, kind of long-term view of that. I, I know that these close to 1,000 numbers are really low. And so, we just want to make sure that everybody is aware that we used to be way over these.
That's correct.
Going back five years.
Yes.
Along with that, and I don't see it in here, maybe it's in here, would be the average length of stay. would be the average length of stay. Is it in here?
I don't believe we have that, but I we can have that added, Commissioner.
Do you know, and you and I have had this discussion, what the average length of stay is?
I I want to be careful to say that I'm giving you my.
Yes.
Not stating a fact.
Right.
Giving you, because I haven't ran that number for a little bit. But it it's somewhere, I'm going to say around twenty-five days. But that you, that's, that figure needs to be kind of dissected a little bit.
No, I understand. I think the last time you and I spoke, it was like a twenty-one. And if you could, going forward, that goes kind of hand in hand with the average daily population. Okay, we got this population. How long are they with us? But it seems to be in the mid to low twenties.
Yeah, anywhere between that three to four-week range is typical.
The staffing, again, kudos. We appear to be at authorized staff levels or ninety-nine percent of authorized staff levels. That's very good. And particularly with the the CO ones, you know, we're authorized for three forty-nine and you're at three forty-five. So, kudos to you and your staff for recruitment and retention. That's, you know, a vast improvement over it was when you came into this job.
I want to thank the commissioners for their support.
Quick question. On page nineteen, we have this sobriety admit. And then on page twenty-nine, we have substance abuse, progress, no progress, whatever. What is the sobriety admit and release referenced on page nineteen?
So, this is kind of, this is a graph that goes under our pretrial release supervision. So, those are people who are court ordered as a condition of their bond to participate in the twenty-four-seven sobriety program, which means they are.
Release contingent on their doing that?
Correct.
Is that right?
That's correct. Yes.
And so, there were fifty-two admitted and seventy-two released.
Correct.
What does that mean?
It 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 means that there were, there were fifty-two people who were arrested and and were given that as a condition of bond. And there were seventy-two cases that were resolved. And so, they were no longer obligated to participate.
And then on page twenty-nine, there's this substance abuse thing, which I think is an in-house program. And it shows ten with no progress, thirteen partially completed, and twenty-one completed. Give us a quick thumbnail of what that is.
Sure. So, there's a couple of different ways, goals that are assigned to people who are in our programs related to substance abuse. So, the the completed would mean they got through all of their goals. The partially completed would mean that they probably got released prior to completing the program. And ten of which failed to participate for one reason or another.
And finally, we'll probably have to come back to this, but I do want to go over the demographics of the population, but that'll have to be on our next go-run. Overall, I think we're generally showing some progress on big parts of.
Time.
We'll come back.
Commissioner Morgan?
I think, thank you for this. Couple of questions. The overtime, six hundred and fifty-four thousand. What would be year-to-date numbers roughly, if you know? And sometime you might let us know that.
Sure. It was, it was significantly higher than that earlier in the year. And we've been significantly lower than that in the, until the last couple of months. But we will, I'll get you that, Commissioner. I would, I would, I don't know it off the top of my head, and I don't want to give you a wrong information.
And and I don't mean to put you on the spot. I understand that. The other thing, you know, that you think about with this, and I know we were at pretty much the staffing levels that you need to be. I think that's something that we need to have your guidance so we can continue to improve that.
Right.
And the renovation, as you said, is, is that nearing completion?
We're getting to the home stretch. Those renovation costs also add to the overtime because those are, those require construction escorts that we don't necessarily put in our, you know, the number that have been required for this project that we don't put in our staffing plan in terms of our authorized staff, because it's not something I'm going to need on an ongoing basis. And also, you know, what the, really, this week, you know, we were, the twenty-four officers who graduated the training academy on November third did two weeks of field training. So, this is their first two, this is their first week working on the floors, independently saving us overtime. So, you know, while we say we were a hundred percent staffed, they were still in training. So, they, you know, the relief that they're providing actually is starting, started, you know, on Sunday. So, hopefully, we will see a decreased amount of overtime over the course of the, you know, as we try and maintain that level, you know, going forward.
And I assume Jeff, who I saw earlier, he's working with you on that renovation to wrap it up.
Yes, public properties, yep.
Then the other thing, it's important for the public to know. You know, it's almost like you're running, and and maybe it's my lack of knowledge, but it's like a hotel when you have, you know, thirteen hundred and eighty released and thirteen twenty-four coming in, or whatever the numbers are, pretty close together, the total number. And then what, when you ask, answer Commissioner Kavanaugh, on the average stay of twenty-five days, meaning some come in and they're out in three days, and some are there that average. And without my having any real knowledge on this, you know, we're talking about the mental health. But you kind of wonder, how much can you do on the mental health in forty days or sixty days? And I assume we're going to be able to treat them when they're released as outpatient kind of thing or doing some of that work. I know, because we've been informed of that.
So, you know, the, in terms of the average length of stay, that that number is really kind of more complicated than just giving you, here's the average length of stay, because about forty, forty-five percent of our individuals get released within seventy-two hours. Some are only there for a matter of hours. So, you know, that, those really suppress that overall average. Those who stay with us beyond seventy-two hours, which is typical, they've gone to court, the judge didn't let them out, and they didn't have the money to pay whatever their bond, they are here for much longer. And our mentally ill population, according to our last stepping-up data, shows that they stay about twice as long as everybody else. Because they're, and that's actually better than the national average. The national average is four times.
One minute.
That is due to complicating factors in their cases, oftentimes that really drive up those lengths of stay, the evaluations for competency, you know, the evaluations. There's all, trying to find appropriate placements, all those things delay cases for those that are most needy. And so, they end up staying with us significantly longer than most people in our population.
Yeah, and when you think of that forty-seven percent, you're talking about over six hundred people with the mental health needs.
Correct.
And the last thing I'd say is just repeat what you said about your staff and acknowledging the job they do under most challenging, difficult circumstances, which we, and I can speak for every member of this board, which we really appreciate what your staff goes through and the challenges they face each and every hour of the day.
Time.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
And I want to echo the sentiments that my colleague, Commissioner Morgan, just expressed regarding the staff. You have incredibly dedicated staff doing a very difficult job under tough conditions. And and kudos to them. We really appreciate everything they do. The demographic question that, you know, comes up repeatedly is the question of the majority-minority population that we have. And that's on page forty-one, which seems to have hit, in my recollection, a year-to-date high with the majority of the population sixty-five point three one percent being minorities. Of that, the largest single segment of individuals locked up in our jail are black people, forty-three point one five percent, which is, I don't know, three or four times the number represented in our census population. And and way more than white people locked up in jail. I'm just saying, this is something that concerns me. I know it concerns you. You have no control over who comes to your correction center, and we all appreciate that. But this is something the community should be aware of. And at some point, hopefully, we can take measures to maybe address that ongoing chronic disparity in representation of people who are locked up in our community. Regarding the point that Commissioner Morgan brought up, the mental health, the people in need of mental health care, you responded that that population subset of the general population has an average length of stay that is longer than the general populations. I think we were talking about around twenty-five days. This is important because we're talking about investing some serious money in treating mental health at our correction center. And I think Commissioner Morgan makes a valid point. You can't do much for people in twenty-five days if they've got serious mental health problems. So, breaking it down, going forward, maybe in your next report, this would be instructive of, okay, that population has a different average length of stay. And this would be, you know, why we need the average length of stay of the general population. And then the subset population, the population that we're going to probably target for the investment of significant resources, has an average length of stay that's longer. I think this would also be instructive for the average length of stay of people who have drug and alcohol problems. You know, the the standard in the medical community for effective inpatient drug and alcohol treatment is thirty days. So, you know, if you're there for twenty-one days or twenty-five days, you know, it's going to be a little problematic, not impossible, but, you know, that's significantly less than what best practices is in the medical community for treating people with drug and alcohol problems. If that population can be identified, and I think you probably can, and they indicate an average length of stay over that, that again would be good information for us, because I think we want to invest in that too. I think actually, we would have more success treating people with drug and alcohol problems if they're there for thirty days or more than we would with people with really chronic, you know, mental health problems. I'm just saying, that's a suggestion. It would help us in this discussion. And I think you've indicated that you might have some good information on that that breaks it out. Average length of stay and then those subset populations.
And Commissioners, I do think that we can make an impact on those with severe mental illness during the length of time that we have to work with them. What's critical is that continuity of care, picking that up so that there's a part, community partner to pick up their care on the outside.
Exactly. That's the conveyor belt question that we've addressed. And what this is crying out for is healthcare provider input on this exact point. And, you know, maybe going forward, we could have that discussion.
Sure.
Either here or in committee, leading up to these discussions, because I know that there's great expertise in our community among healthcare providers. I'm talking, you know, people with M.D. after their name and people who run mental health facilities in our community that we need to have partnered with us on this continuity of care thing to have any chance of this having a significant impact. If we just treat them and release them, you're not going to get much more than wash, rinse, and repeat.
Time. Thank you. No other lights? No other questions for Mike at this point? Thank you, Mike, for the report. No need for executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call? Or please vote. Sorry.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Motion passes six to zero.
We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia? Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Rogers? Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, November seventh, two thousand twenty-three. And item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is on the consent agenda. This is later.
Okay. No questions or comments on A or B? Please vote.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Who who made the motion and second? I didn't catch it.
Commissioner Rogers made the motion, and Commissioner Morgan seconded it.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh? Motion passes six to zero.
Next, we'll move to our consent agenda. Items A through I. And please note that items eight, eleven, and sixteen are going to be pulled and laid over for two weeks. They need additional information on the agreements to to get that to the county attorneys. On H, eight, nine, eight, eleven, and sixteen. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
They have one on eight, but as long as it's pulled, I'll I'll put that off until it comes back. But nine is under the same H, which is Dr. Lyndy Hughes, Lindsey Hughes, Health Department Director, requests approval of the following. Nine is the Second Amendment with One World Community Health Centers Regarding Women, Infants, and Children WIC For An Additional Twenty-Five Percent Fourth Quarter To The Organization's Sub-Award For Fiscal Year Twenty-three To Provide WIC Services Through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three In The Amount Of Eight Hundred And Fourteen Thousand Nine Hundred And Fifty Dollars. And this comes with a long list of other WIC applicants, but it's, I believe, by far the largest single award. And it is budgeted. It says, I was wondering if anyone here, and I don't see Dr. Hughes here or on the screen from the Health Department, could possibly address this. I'm sure there's a good reason for the disparity, but most of these are in the, you know, under five thousand range. And then we have one that's almost a million dollars. So, just for the record, I mean, is there a reason that this is so much higher than all the rest that we entertain? If anybody knows.
Commissioner Rogers?
It's basically, it's largely based on the amount that you serve. So, depending on the amount of patients you serve in your organization and and the two there, eight, obviously, eight will be held over, but for the volume you serve, it has a lot to do with that.
So, if you broke these out, it'd be kind of a per capita. And One World, and the other one that's pulled, the Drew Clinic, would have a much higher per capita, is what you're saying, of their service population?
Pretty much.
Okay. The other one that I am looking at, and again, just for the record, and I thought I saw somebody from Environmental Services here earlier, is number fifteen, Agreement With Nebraska Department of Environment and Energy And Environmental Protection Agency To Transition The Omaha Air Quality Control CAA One-O-Five Grant To A Calendar-Year Basis Through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. And that's an eighty thousand dollar transfer. I I appreciate this is kind of a, just an administrative thing. But for the record, so people in the community know what we're doing with these funds, I was wondering if there was somebody here that could just say, this is what this grant does. And I don't know if our director could.
He was.
Maybe address that very briefly. They're trying to get the public an idea of what we're doing with some of these grant funds and.
Commissioners, Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director. This is not in my area.
I see.
So, I.
Okay.
I can't answer that question for you.
All right.
Apologize.
That's all I have on the consent agenda.
Okay. So, there was a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any further questions or comments on the consent agenda? Any further questions or comments on the consent agenda?
I have a question. Since...
As I understand the rules...
State your name, please.
Oh, Larry Store, 501-5, Lafayette Avenue, 68132. As I understand the rules, when it's polled or discussed, then the public has a crack at it also. Is that correct?
If you have an item that you want to make a comment on, on the consent agenda, this is your time to do that.
This goes in line with things I've said about other topics in regards to the Open Meetings Act and the differences between this board and a city council on the treatment of pulling things or not pulling things on the consent agenda. This board allows me to talk on it. I am opposed to a lot of that money, okay? Mainly because the federal government, number one, is broke, and they've been telling us that they might, they might default any day. I mean, even Congress is telling us that. But my main point here is, I was kicked out of this chamber last week for debating something that was pulled out of the consent agenda. Now, it's either a reasonable rule through the Open Meetings Act or it is not. If I can do it here, I ought to be able to do it there, too.
Do you have an item on the consent agenda you want to talk about?
I just mentioned the item. But also, that needs to be discussed in these chambers, okay?
Thank you.
Because you shouldn't be able to pull it and let the public speak.
Thank you.
And they, they shouldn't get by with saying no.
Thank you, Larry.
It has to do with the consent agenda, my dear. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Vote, please. Roll call. Vote on the consent.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next, we'll do recognition and proclamations. We have one. It's a resolution recognizing Saturday, November 25th, 2023, as Small Business Saturday. We have participated in the passing of this resolution for about a year or so. But I'll read the resolution. Whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, 33.1 million small businesses exist across the U.S., employing nearly 61.7 million Americans. And whereas small businesses represent 99.9% of all businesses in the U.S., accounting for 46.4% of private sector employees. And whereas founded by American Express in 2010 and officially cosponsored by this SBA since 2011, Small Business Saturday, the Saturday following each Thanksgiving holiday week, has become an important part of small businesses' shopping seasons, contributing millions annually in revenue to our economy. And whereas this year, Saturday, November 25th, 2023, is Small Business Saturday, the day to celebrate and support small businesses in all they do for our communities. And whereas Douglas County celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our region, creating jobs, boosting our local economy, and supporting our communities. And whereas Douglas County and all counties encourages residents to join and support organizations across the country to promote our local small businesses by shopping at independent retailers and manufacturers and to patron local restaurants, coffee shops, and the like during November and throughout the year. Now, therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby recognizes Saturday, November 25th, 2023, as Small Business Saturday, and encourages our residents to note the important role that small businesses play in the well-being of our economy and community and to support local by shopping at a small business. I would ask for a motion to approve. Any questions or comments? All right.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next, our citizen comments.
Ken Anderson, Douglas County, Irvington. I spoke here two weeks ago, and on that very day, things changed. And what happened was there was election in several states around the country, and E.S.N.S. did the same thing that they did in Dallas County the year prior. And that has caused, plus other events, I learned about court case Heller v. Bruin had to do with the Second Amendment, but it mentioned the Fourteenth Amendment. In that court case, in the ruling for that court case from the Supreme Court indicating that when a person's rights are the issue, damages, injuries do not have to be shown. Here is part of the Nebraska Constitution, Article VI or six and Section six, votes how cast. All votes shall be by ballot or other means authorized by the legislative legislature whereby the vote and the, this is the part that I want to bring out here, the secrecy of the electors' votes will be preserved. And I want my votes to be, remain secret from E.S.N.S. And a lot of other folks do, too. And our rights, we're not waiving our rights just because we go through the process of voting when E.S.N.S. is in that, in that chain of custody for the ballots. We don't waive our rights. It has to be done explicitly and with informed consent. And otherwise, you've got a lot of voters that want their ballots to remain secret from E.S.N.S. And that'll do it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning, again. Larry Store, 501-5, Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I also want to talk about the elections again and once again give the county here in Douglas County the opportunity to be the first in Nebraska to step up with a discussion, a presentation by we the people, not by any government person at this podium. There is one group that I do not speak for, but they are preparing a, I guess, a resolution for this board. It must be for this board because it has to do with the election law and recounting observations at the Dundee, I mean, Douglas County Election Office. So I guess they're going to come down here and present it to you or ask you to present it as a resolution. Or they're writing the wording and they're confused over some of the wording. One of those words is, what's the definition of transparency? I had a little argument with them about that because what's transparent to them might not be transparent to you or to me. So they're having a little difficulty. But I want to submit to you a copy. I guess it's a draft of what they're doing, and they were asking citizens to come down here and do this, to give it to you, to push it to you. So I'm doing that now. That particular body is a Douglas County branch of Nevada, Nebraska Voter Accuracy Project. I do not represent them. They do not like me. I do not like him, them. But they do push the same ideas that I like and that Mr. Robert Borer, Robert J. Borer, who has standing in Nebraska because he's ran for office as Secretary of State and in a write-in campaign for governor. So hopefully, he'll be here one day to be the presenter on why we need to have the open and transparent discussion, two ways, about how the election was stolen because too many government people have no clue. Juanina Johnson, I understand, is a tech expert. She probably knows what we talk about. But I was a programmer for a short time, and I learned a little bit about programming my machines. And I know that I can make that machine do anything I want it to do. Just like I was in college, they told me statistics is lies and damn lies. You can make statistics tell whatever story you want to tell. So let's let Douglas County, the largest county in Nebraska, be the first one to hold a totally transparent, open presentation by Robert Borer and we the people as proponents. You people will be the opponents. You get five minutes or less if we want to let you speak. Then we get to come back and counter whatever you say when you do speak. That'll turn the tables so you'll know how we feel when you interrupt us or have us ordered out by the sheriff's deputies for saying something that our First Amendment rights say that we ought to be able to say. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda?
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
This, wanted to talk to you about...
Louise, you have to identify.
Oh, Louise, C minus 2709, Dewey Avenue. Definitely need to identify myself because I have my own opinions apart from everybody. Guidance for the Local Assistance and Tribal Constituent Fund. The U.S. Department of Treasury updated it in September 2023. This is a guidance for using the ARPA funding. I know that the county received, it's 11 pages, the guidance that have been updated. So you are dealing with this money. You awarded, you were awarded, according to the Clerk's website. You were awarded, Douglas County received $110.8 million from the federal government pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. The first payment of $55.4 million was received, and forthwith, you awarded that money, which I am trying to figure out what part of ARPA, the $110 million that you received, came from. And if it came from the guidance for the local assistance, for the Local Assistance or Tribal Constituent Fund, which is L.A.T.C.F., then you have a guidance here that has been updated. I went back through resolutions. There's no mention of where or what section your funding is coming from, that you accepted from ARPA, from the congressional allotment. So that's my question. Maybe you can answer it later. But that is important to me because I'm trying to figure out what money is outstanding from the $110 million. So you, if you can see here, you, these numbers represent amounts that you've already allocated or distributed. So I already talked about this $52 million. And then here's $50 million for your mental health initiative. That is $102 million. So it seems to me that you have $8 million that you still haven't allocated or that I haven't found yet as a matter of you've already decided what's going on with it. And then you have another $20 million from this $50 million for the mental health initiative. And I get $20 million because you've already agreed with constructing a facility in the corrections, in the jailhouse for, amounting $30 million. So to me, then, I do not have the documents that show where all...
One minute.
...of this money is going to, which would be, what is that, $38 million? I mean, $28 million. And then also, I was going, I was reviewing my documents, and I found this. Isn't that nice? D.C. Correction Center update, November 8th, 2018. This is a project management chart. And since this was presented in 2018, you haven't asked anybody to come forward with project management intentions to show a document like this. And Dan, I'm not giving you this document. Maybe you can scan it. But it's...
Time.
Yeah, your mental, yeah, corrections. I'll talk about it later.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just for the record, the clerk, if you present anything during...
We can't.
Well, I know, but, well, I need copies. If you present something, I need copies of it, so.
Okay. Well, can you give it back then?
Okay.
Yeah, well, I'll talk to you later, Louise. I know how to handle you, so.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Hi, I'm Nicole Leclair, speaking for our Omaha. And I do have copies. So I'm speaking now. I will speak later, too, I'm sure, but the other night, I was fortunate to go to Interfaith Thanksgiving Service. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it's an amazing, an opportunity to have people that we might think don't get along come together. So Muslim, Jewish, Christian all come together in one space. I know Omaha is kind of a role model for that around the world, but especially now, it's very moving. So Mike Hornacek, I'm sorry if I miss, if I say his name wrong, President and CEO of Together. He usually speaks. I asked him if I could have a copy of what he said. He gave me his copy that night, told him I would like to read it today, and that's what you have in front of you. And I'm just going to read parts of it that I thought were important. And I want to start with, before I start reading that, a quote from Mark Nepo about listening. "To listen is to lean in softly with the willingness to be changed by what we hear." So the title of, I told him it was a sermon that should be on the news every night. This is the reality check of what we're living in. Perfect storm. So they operate five programs, and this is not to ask for money for Together, although that would be nice, but I just want to give a little shout out for what they do. Our Nourish Program works to address hunger in our community, providing food and... Our Nourish Program works to address hunger in our community, providing food and SNAP and WIC outreach. Horizon's Program works every day to address the needs of those experiencing chronic homelessness in our community by securing permanent housing and providing long-term intensive case management services. Crisis Engagement Program works to address episodic homelessness by providing short-term case management services and targeted financial assistance to maintain and create housing stability. Short-Term Emergency Housing Program operates to support those fifty-five and above that are experiencing a housing crisis with special health consideration, such as lung disease, cancer symptoms requiring isolation. Advocacy Program works to ensure the voices of those we serve every day are heard by our elected officials, consistently educating and bringing awareness to hunger and homelessness in our community. Hunger and homelessness have hit crisis levels exacerbated by sharply rising costs and its impact on housing, food, healthcare, and fuel costs. Organizations, I'm gonna skip that, sadly, in twenty twenty-three, he says, "A reality that I feared last year has come true. We are still experiencing elevated needs that rival peak pandemic times, but the resources needed to meet that need have significantly diminished due to government programs ending and a weakened private funding landscape." These funds provide a safety net for, for providing dollars to organizations like Together to purchase food, provide rent, utility assistance, and provide additional staff capacity to meet the elevated need. The private sector funding landscape has weakened due to market losses and instability, as well as competition for funding and investment being as strong as ever. Combine that with multiple priority projects and funding priorities rebalancing to a new normal, and you have the recipe for a perfect storm. That perfect storm has arrived in our community. Families are getting squeezed by ever-increasing costs, including rent, utilities, transportation, food, prescriptions, and healthcare, to name a few. I'm sure we can relate to this experience in some way. However, for the people we, they serve each day, this reality means choices. I'm gonna jump. One of the things that I thought was shocking is that there are thirty-five evictions happening on a slow day and fifty-five happening on a busy day. It would be more than fifty-five, but they cap it at fifty-five. You may have already noticed a significant increase in people experiencing street homelessness. So I'm mainly bringing all this up. I didn't want to assume his thoughts on, on the mental health issue. I did talk to him about it, as well as the juvenile justice issue. So I'm not saying these are his views, whatever I say. But the, I, I appreciate this, too. The reality is the unemployment rate in Nebraska is currently two point oh percent, yet we have thirty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-six job openings. The issue is unemployment. The issue is underemployment. So I just, I'm mainly bringing this up for you to just slow down with all the building.
Thank you.
Think of people again.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Dan H., Douglas County Clerk, just quickly, wanted to thank Human Resources for all their help during open enrollment. It's a ton of work, and I'm sure it's pretty stressful, too. So I know, like, when my, people on my team are reaching out them with questions, they were usually pretty quick to respond, even though I'm sure they were absolutely slammed. So just want to give a shout out to our H R team. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to public.
Over to you again. I saw where I was speaking now, this document that I sent to you. Didn't put it into the record. I'd like to just hand it to Mr. Ashnell.
That'd be great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. With that, we'll move to our public hearings. We, first one is the Frayland Farms applicant replat located in Section fourteen, Township sixteen, Range zero-nine, Parcel Number one-four-two-zero-eight-one-six-zero-zero-two. And with us today is Laura Dietrich from our Environmental Services to tell us about this.
Good morning. Good morning Commissioners. Laura Dietrich, Planning and Zoning Coordinator. I believe you have copies, but I need to apologize if not. All right. Thank you. So I have a couple replats on the agenda this morning. The first one is Frayland Farms. This is down at the southwest corner of two-hundred-and-eighty-eighth and Bennington Road. We are simply adjusting an interior lot line. This is what it looks like currently. And this is what the zoning looks like. So we are adjusting that interior lot line to match that zoning that's on there. There will not be any additional rezoning taking place, and we will not be creating a new parcel. It will just, the zoning will line up with what you're seeing on there. So the darker portion is ag and the lighter portion is rural residential. Planning Commission recommended approval at the November fifteenth meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you. This is the public hearing. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to this item? Seeing or hearing none, I will close the public hearing on Item A. What is the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Friend, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent.
We'll move to the next public hearing. Lonnie Peterson is the applicant replat of Peterson Acres, located in Section twelve, Township sixteen, Range zero-nine, Parcel Number two-zero-one-zero-five-five-one-zero-five-zero, Address of two-seven-six-four-zero Bennington Road, Valley, Nebraska, six-eight-zero-six-four. Again, Ms. Dietrich is here from our Environmental Services to tell us about it during this public hearing.
There we go. Laura Dietrich, Planning and Zoning Coordinator. This is a replat of Peterson Acres. It is located at the northwest corner of two-hundred-and-seventy-sixth and Bennington Road. In the past, Mr. Peterson had gone through the subdivision regulations, and he is going to currently add another building lot. So there is Lot One that will turn into Lot One and Lot Three. This is the current Lot One. This is Lot Two, which is not a part of the replat. And this is the new creation of Lot Three that will be a building lot. This is currently zoned rural residential, and that zoning will remain unchanged. Planning Commission did vote to approve, did recommend approval on this at their November fifteenth meeting. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. This is the public hearing. Those wishing to speak for Gans, please come forward.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Douglas Street, seven-one oh eight-three-six Old Mill Road. I'll try to reduce the average testimony time here. We're here with the owner to answer any questions you may have and also express appreciation for the work you've done and what Ms. Dietrich's done to help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing? I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Friend, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners.
Next public hearing is to permit discussion in the presentation of testimony regarding the proposed revisions for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five Department of General Assistance Guidelines. And with us is the Director, Melissa Sedgwick. Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. Melissa, CEO and Director of Douglas County Department of General Assistance. Just wanted to give a quick recap of our department, what we're doing. And then we are here for the public hearing for our annual or biennial guideline review. So we are a mandated program, but we're mandated by the state. So it's pursuant to Nebraska revised Statute sixty-eight, one-thirty-one. Every county board in the state of Nebraska is going to be the overseer of the poor and provide general assistance to individuals who meet the requirements and are eligible pursuant to the standards established by the county board. And that is what we do in our department on behalf of the county. So the general assistance programs, all of them are based on income and resources, and it's to help maintain the minimum health and decency of the indigent within our county. So right now, we are providing shelter assistance, which includes rent, mortgage, and utilities, non-food necessities voucher, which is a twenty-five-dollar monthly allowance for personal hygiene and environmental cleanliness. We also do bus tickets for those folks that are on our program to get two different appointments, whether that's job training, employment, education, doctor's appointment, things such as that. We have clothing voucher that we authorize as well within the eligibility period. Typically going to be weather-related items that they are purchasing with those. And then we also do transportation outside of Douglas County. So that's going to be a bus ticket for somebody that has been in Douglas County for less than six months that is trying to go back home. And then we also have cremation assistance. So anybody who would pass away within Douglas County or is a Douglas County resident, the county is legally responsible if the next of kin doesn't have the funds to cover that or the individual who passed away, their income and resources don't cover that as well. So some additional things that we do in our department. We have a clothing closet where we have coats, shoes, shirts, blankets, correct clothing that we have that is free to all of our clients, and that is pretty much items that we've donated within the department. Instead of taking them to Goodwill, we bring them into our department. We also have personal care and hygiene packets that we have to kind of supplement some of the costs. So those are feminine hygiene products, hand sanitizers, sunscreen, and scent repellent. Those are typically going to be for the unhoused clients. We have seasonal supplies, hand warmers, ponchos, emergency blankets, hats and gloves we provide as well, and then some emergency food assistance, so protein bars, protein shakes. And then we have electrolyte packets, kind of when folks are in need. Determinants of eligibility, so in order to be eligible for general assistance, you have to be a Douglas County resident, a United States citizen, or lawfully present in the United States, and eligible for other public assistance, excluding SNAP and light heaps. So somebody can receive food stamps and energy assistance through the state and still be eligible for general assistance. And then insufficient income and resources. So our client count, this is kind of just a graph of our client count from fiscal year eighteen nineteen through twenty-two to twenty-three. You can see that there is a dip in fiscal year twenty twenty-one and then fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. We, with expansion of Medicaid in Nebraska, we were able to phase out our clinic because all of our clients were eligible for Nebraska Medicaid. So we had a drop in clientele due to that. And then we also, that was kind of COVID time where there was a lot of other funding in the community that was available. So some of our clients were able to get that assistance rather than coming to us. You can see in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we're kind of going back up again, and we're just under fifteen hundred clients that we served last year. Zip code map of where our clients are. This is an October snapshot. We served about five-hundred-and-seventy-nine individuals. Just like to point out that the six-eight-zero-zero-zero zip code, we use that for unhoused individuals. So about thirteen point one percent of our clients are unhoused. And the other top zip codes are six-eight-one-oh-two, six-eight-one-oh-four, and six-eight-one-one-one, which is pretty similar to, if you look at all the other zip code maps in the community as far as poverty and income, that's kind of where the, the hot ones are. And then looking at client services expenditures, again, kind of doing that snapshot of the top direct client services and expenses, you can see where we've been at the last five years as far as what we've provided in rent assistance, medical client aid, non-food, burials, assisted living, client bus services, and client utilities. You can see in twenty-two, twenty-three, we had a big jump in the run assistance that we are providing. Again, we're kind of coming out of COVID. The money is kind of going away. And our program is very much based on the economy, so when economy's doing well, our numbers drop. So we are seeing that uptick. So why I'm here today is for the public hearing. So by NLE, we have to have a public hearing to look at our guidelines. And that's what we are here to do today. For the past month, we have had a draft of our guidelines on our website. We have distributed amongst all the public libraries. The City Clerks of Bennington Valley, Rolston, and the Village of Waterloo have copies as well. We have a copy at County Admin in our department, the Sheriff's Office, and then we also have it posted on our website. We send out about a thousand different notices to different vendors, landlords, community agencies, all of our clients to accept feedback. Typically, what we're looking at is cost of living, so looking at any increases in assistance that we are offering. The key proposals that we are, have entered into for the draft are to increase the standard housing deduction. So historically, well, prior to the last guideline review, clients, if they would report, they would earn any type of income, even if it would be a dollar, we would have to budget it and account for that in the assistance. It was, then about two years ago, we allowed the folks to have a hundred and fifty dollars of unearned or earned income that we would exempt, knowing that we cannot provide all of their needs. And then we are requesting a fifty-dollar increase for that. So there'd be the two hundred dollars of earned income, earned or unearned income that we would exempt for their budget. We're also requesting or proposing a shelter payment schedule to increase as well. So right now, we are, be able to assist up to seven hundred dollars for a residential unit. And that does include utilities as well. And so what we're asking or proposing is to increase that by a hundred dollars. So effective January one, we would be able to assist with up to eight hundred dollars in run assistance for a single individual. And then it would be nine hundred dollars if it was a general assistance couple because they are also eligible for a utility stipend, and that is already in our guidelines. And then there's the cremation fee schedule, which is, again, we authorize cremation assistance. And every guideline review, we go ahead and look at the Consumer Price Index and then adjust the rates according to that. And so that is a fifty-eight-dollar increase to what we are paying right now. And then just wanted to kind of provide an outlook of what is going on in the community. So we are proposing the eight hundred-dollar rental assistance amount for twenty twenty-four. This shows kind of the trajectory of what we have authorized as far as general assistance goes, the HUD fair market rent. And the estimate right now for twenty twenty-four is that the fair market for an efficiency apartment is eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. But we're also, I wanted to point out that the living wage calculator is showing that in Douglas County, a single individual will average about seven hundred and seventeen dollars in housing expenses. And so I think that, based on kind of what's going on in the community, the HUD fair market rent, I'd really like to continue to watch that and see what that does over the next couple of years. So just to propose that one hundred-dollar increase to go to the eight hundred dollars. Also looking at our budget and what we have been spending and our number of clientele and where our clientele are living, I think that is the best bet for our department and what we're suggesting right now. So next step is we have the public hearing, which is today to accept any additional comments. We really haven't heard much of anything. Typically, the hot item is just what are we going to increase our benefits? And again, we haven't really heard much about that. And then once we have the public hearing, any additional comments that we might hear today, we would adjust the draft again and then bring it back to the Board for tentative approval. And we're looking at December fifth for that. And then I just wanted to, here's all of our contact information, too. So if anybody would like to apply for assistance, four oh two, four four four, six two one five. And then those are the various ways to contact our offices or myself if there are any information, any comments, whether it's on the guidelines or just general questions.
All right. Thank you, Melissa. This is the public hearing. Commissioner Kavanaugh and then Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you. Following up on the Health and Human Service Committee hearing that we had on this topic on the fourteenth, we discussed at that point a number of items, some of which touched on here today, regarding the general assistance program, which currently is budgeted at, I think, five-point-six million dollars. Part of what we were looking at is, and this will be a long, longer probably discussion than what we're going to do today, is meeting some of the unmet need. At the committee hearing, we heard from area food banks and pantries that since COVID, the need for food assistance has spiked in our community, has gone up, not down, and continues to rise. We're facing a bit of a crisis. The statute that authorizes general assistance specifically authorizes food assistance. The counties can elect to provide what assistance they think under that statute. And we provide mostly rent assistance, which is good. But in light of the fact that over the last ten years, we have turned back unspent balance of our general assistance appropriation of about eight hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. It would seem that there is room for us to look at what some of the other counties do. I'm particularly mentioning Lincoln Lancaster County, which has a collaborative effort between the city and the county to provide food assistance in their community. And this is something that we intend to look at going forward to meet some of this unmet need as expressed by testimony at the committee from area food banks and pantries. To address some of that, I have announced that I am designating fifty thousand dollars from my ARPA set aside to area food bank to meet the holiday needs of the community so that people will have enough to eat over their Thanksgiving and holiday season. Specifically, this will be administered through Heartland Hope Mission Food Bank. But this is just one of a number of food banks which we could use, as does Lancaster-Lincoln, to administer food assistance going forward. This is something that I note in the PowerPoint today was added since the PowerPoint of a week ago under the additional provisions where it has emergency sustance. Pointed out that we do give protein bars, protein shakes, electrolyte packages, et cetera. Well, this would be an expansion to mainline assistance to people in need of regular meals that are not being met and that have spiked since the COVID crisis has exacerbated both food and rent needs in our community. The idea that we can do this based on the budget information that indicates that on a timeline going back to fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, where we budgeted six-point-two million dollars, this is during the pandemic, unspent balance that year was one-point-four million dollars. The following year, twenty-one, twenty-two, budgeted five-point-six million dollars. Unspent balance, again, during the pandemic, one-point-three million dollars. And twenty-twenty-three, the most recent completed fiscal year, budgeted five-point-six million dollars and unspent balance of
One minute.
Six-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars. So in order to address both of those things, utilizing the monies that we've already dedicated to provide an unmet need for food during this winter, you know, we're going to do what we can with what we've got from where we are with some ARPA funding. But we need to look at doing a collaboration with the cities in Douglas County, similar to what Lincoln Lancaster County does, to help people get enough to eat. We have ample resources, as indicated by the amount that we turn back every year. It's just a matter of coordinating with our partners in the local community to expand that emergency sustance provision that we do. The other proposals here are more than justified. The shelter payment increases.
Thank you.
Come back.
Commissioner Rogers?
Melissa, so talk to me a little bit. How do you, how did you, how did you get to, I understand the housing piece. And even in hearing what's said, which is a noble option, I mean, I'd rather, why wouldn't we just go up to nine hundred and match what HUD is in respects to running along that rate instead of staying a little bit below? But also, explain to me what the rationale was for the fifty percent, the fifty-dollar increase in the deduction. Because some, I mean, if we were to increase the standard housing deduction up higher, that would allow more people in and make more eligible? Is that, would that be correct?
Not necessarily. So what would make more people eligible would be increasing our rent. So what we look at is, as far as person that would be eligible would be anybody that is not, their income is not exceeding our max rent assistance. And so right now, our max rent assistance is the seven hundred dollars. And so anybody that is earning seven hundred dollars and below would be eligible. And then from that is where we're looking at reduce like the standard housing deduction. And so we would be able to assist with some other rent. It is, so the standard housing deduction, how we figured out that and asking for a fifty-dollar increase is kind of looking at what clients have to supplement for their basic needs, what they're not able to get with SNAPs, with food stamps. And then, you know, looking at the twenty-five-dollar non-food voucher we give them. And then it's like, what else do they have to purchase throughout the month? And so trying to allow them to have some income that's not counted on their budget where we'd still be able to assist them with that. So, and that's kind of just looking at the, what the cost of different things that are not covered by SNAP. And again, that's pretty much going to be the hygiene and then like cleaning supplies and anything else like that, and just additional food. So that was where we came up with additional fifty dollars. And we usually round up because we, budgeting purposes on our end, it's easier, honestly, when we have to do the client budgets. And as far as not going up to nine hundred dollars. So when looking at our budget, within my budget right now, I do not have, worse, I'm, I think, like one-point-two percent over.
Can you, John, one second?
Yes.
All right.
I'm about one-point-two percent over in my rental assistance account right now for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So to jump from seven hundred dollars to nine hundred, I will most likely have to come and ask for additional funds based on where we are right now. And also the fair market rent, there are years that it has decreased. So it would increase one year, and then the next year, it would decrease. Do I think that's going to happen? Do I know that's going to happen? I don't. But I think just to kind of take a more conservative approaches to increasing it to the eight hundred dollars. And honestly, looking at our landlord pool and where our clients are, it's not us increasing it to eight hundred or nine hundred dollars is not going to open up all of these units where our clients can go. Our clients have evictions. They have, sometimes it's because we are the payer, is where there's landlords that won't work with us. And there are certain landlords that they're going to increase their rent to whatever we increase. So we will get notices as of January second saying, all of these folks where we were paying seven hundred dollars, we now have increased their rent to eight hundred dollars. So we are automatically going to see those go up. I just don't, again, knowing our clientele and where they're able to go, and also knowing that the housing market, what it is, there's nineteen thousand home gap for our type of clientele where they are as far as income in the community. And the studies are done. So it's not, it's trying to balance what we can do and what we can offer, knowing our clientele, also working within our budget. And I keep saying housing, we need housing, we need affordable housing. I think that is where the investment and the conversations really need to be because we have a lot of clients already now that have our voucher. They're approved on our program, but they can't find a place to live. And so we could increase it to fifteen hundred dollars. That's not going to open up, they're not going to rent to some of our clientele. And I think that's what we need to fix and focus on.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Commissioner Rogers raises a good point. And in light of the fact that we have a consistent unspent balance of general assistance, I would be in favor of making that increase to the HUD level of, I believe it's nine hundred dollars. We discussed this in committee, and it just doesn't make sense to me that we turn back money every year, and yet we can't have at least the HUD minimum for rental assistance. So at the end of this comment, I would make that motion to increase. That's why we're having this hearing today, is to make adjustments to these proposed regulations. That's an adjustment that would certainly seem to be in order. The impact of everything that we do with general assistance, as you can see from the information provided here today, is consistently in North and South Omaha, overwhelmingly in North and South Omaha. The numbers are stark in that there are, zip code by zip code, information provided by the department that indicate zip codes with zero general assistance recipients, zip codes with one or two or three or four, and then zip codes with twenty-three, thirty-two, forty-two, eighty-five, ninety or more. And so all of those zip codes that are way high, are east of Seventy-second Street, and they are North Omaha and South Omaha. So in order to make this the most effective use of our resources, I think that we need to put up everything that we budget to meet the need, which doesn't seem to be slowing down since COVID. It seems to be going up, not only for rent assistance, but going forward to look seriously at providing some emergency food assistance. These are basic, basic needs that the statute authorizes us to meet. These are people who fall through the social safety net. As indicated, they're not eligible for other programs or there's an emergency that requires emergency need. We need to step up and do that. And if that would be a small start towards that by going to the HUD-proposed rental assistance average of, I believe it's nine hundred, you can correct me. But that's what I would propose that we, that we do. Is that right? Is that number right?
It's, oh, we would
The one that
Yeah, it's like eight ninety-five.
Commissioner Rogers proposed. I'm looking at page
Should be eight hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Anyhow, it has the twenty-twenty-four HUD fair market rent efficiency of eight hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Yep.
That's what we're looking at here. So that's the number, right?
That is the HUD fair market rent recommendation for twenty-twenty-four.
I would recommend that we go to the HUD fair market rent efficiency number for these guidelines going forward. And that number is eight hundred and ninety-five. I make that motion.
We can't, we can't do that right now during the public hearing.
Okay.
But what you could do is submit that when we're going to vote on them
Okay.
as amendments.
And we're going to have this before yours out?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
The other thing is, you know, this is a great opportunity because we're in kind of the holiday season.
One minute.
To note that we, you know, we've got a lot of partners that we could collaborate with, not only public partners, but when I was coming in today, I heard on KQCH that they're engaged in the diaper drive that they do with Lydia House every year. And they will be collecting diapers at, I think it's Hundred and Thirty-second and Dodge High V, starting, I think, December fifth. These people do great work providing women with shelter and education and housing and food and diapers for their children, women who have no place else to go. And this is a great opportunity for us to use some of our public or private partners. And the radio station ninety-one, four-point-one collaborates every year with Lydia House. They do just a great job of providing basic needs for women and families in need. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers?
So Melissa, real quick, explain, does, from what, I'm trying to wrap my head around the standard housing deduction. Does the standard housing deduction basically provide, if somebody comes into our program, does it provide them more discretionary income for them to use on other things?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Then I'll touch base with you off because I do remember that conversation we had about the housing piece. And that's why I wanted to ask, because that triggered that. Even though it would be there, I definitely, from that discussion you had, kind of understand that basically it feels like the landlords are going to play this game against the tenants that we have. So basically, we almost feel like we'd be negotiating against ourselves with this money. But I am curious, and I can talk to you within the next two weeks, about what the increase in the standard housing deduction would provide and how that would play out. Because the, the, some of the toiletries and other stuff like that, that seems awfully low. But I'll wait and talk to you on it to get an idea where that's from and get a feel for where that goes. Thank you.
I, I did, so for the public hearing and Teresa, I'm not sure. So from my understanding, if we are going to change something in the draft, that we would indeed need to have another public hearing and then come back again. So these would be effective January one. They need to be whatever is decided. And I also have a lot of internal department forms and training that we need to do on with our staff. I know that the next meeting is not till December fifth. So I, I guess I would like to be able to determine moving forward, like what, if we are going to make changes to the draft, then I need to. There's a lot of other things that I'm going to need to do and then do the public notice and everything as well. So not trying to push the time, but it is time-sensitive.
Okay. And I don't necessarily disagree what Commissioner Kavanaugh and Commissioner Rogers have talked about. But what I heard was you saying increasing it wasn't going to necessarily increase the market in which our clients would be able to use. So what we would really be doing is, we're not really helping the people in housing. We're helping the landlord get more money.
And that's not everybody. We have great landlords. We're always looking for more. But there are, we, every year, this is a thing where they will move it up to where we, what we are offering. And they're not changing anything about the home. They're renting it. I mean, and that's a lot of the zip codes that our clients live in. The rent is not nine hundred dollars. I, and so, yeah, that's all I'm saying.
Well, I guess what my point is, is that we, I think we need to have further discussion as to what would really help or not help. The same with the food pantries. I've had many discussions with lots of food pantry folks. And I asked the question actually, is, is there a GIS map, if you will, about where all these pantries are? Because if you really look at pantries, it's not just our big ones. There's a pantry in darn near every church, school now. And so obviously, that need is going to increase. But I, I think we need to get a way better handle on the food pantries and where they are within our community and really the true need. And then the food part, if I heard you right, the three things, the clothing closet, the food pantry, and there was one other thing that weren't, we're not paying for it. It's your department providing through volunteer donations. Those things right there, correct? Those things right there, correct?
Yes, so we do purchase, like the hand warmers and hand sanitizer and insect repellent does come out of our budget. And so do the protein bars. But all of that other stuff is stuff we're donating and doing internally.
Okay. And I do, and I do want to remind everybody that we are and have had Ms. Sasha Burscheid here just a week or so ago about her project intentional, which we're participating in county departments. I think we have a total of eight. And this is a project, Project Intentionals Winter Wonderland Emporium Holiday Store at Baxter Arena on December 10th. And there's about 1,500 caregivers can shop for free essentials and holiday items. So we are participating in just another plug to get your donations in because again, it's helping a lot of probably our own general assistance clients, but people within the community. So with that, I don't see any other lights. Anyone else wishing to speak during this public hearing? All right. Oh, come on.
Police Manus 2709, Dewey Avenue. I don't agree that if you made amendments, you'd have to have another public hearing on the amendments. You are presenting a, the public hearing now on the proposal, and then later on, when you are, it's up for consideration. It's a normal business if you make any changes. I don't understand why this would have special consideration. And I, I think that if you increase rental assistance to your clients, then that opens up their discretionary funds. So that, that would be a advantage for your clients as they struggle through their day-to-day lives. One thing that I want to ask is, you said you were, you provide service for a mandated service? Are all your services the one mandated services? Or do you have, are you grouping that term that you're providing a mandated services? Because Mr. Friend, you said that there was 27 mandated services that the board contributes to. And then later on, I heard you say it's up to 50 or more. So I want to, I want to make sure that when you say that you are providing one mandated services, it's actually one mandated service? Or you're just, it's like a little M, you know, little mandated service that you're referring to? But it's actually all these different services that you are mandated to do? Could you say, is that one or is it more?
Thank you.
So for the Department of General Assistance, we are one mandated service. What is under the umbrella of general assistance is determined by the county board and is different with each county.
With that, anyone else?
Chiquila Yarborough, 2417 Burdette Street. Glad we are discussing this topic today. Thank you for whoever put those little impact books together. My children are reading them. I, the, the number of clients that we see who are on general assistance, I can piggyback a lot off of what she's saying. I think that I would have loved to hear a little bit more about increasing the $25 allowance because it's, that's all they get, like the, there's a $25 cash allowance. So we're offsetting that. A lot of people come in, they want a food pantry or whatnot. But we are offsetting additionally what people are receiving through general assistance. In the matter of housing, I know it's far-fetched, but I'm the far-fetched person to come to the meetings. I think we should build county housing. Because that's how we kind of circumvent the games that the landlords are going to keep playing. The landlord, the problem is, it's not that there's not enough housing. It's that people can't afford the housing that there is. You have two and three bedrooms going for $1,700, $2,000 in blighted areas. And there's really no oversight on the condition of the area. And so people just don't have the means to live anymore. I think it, if we're building buildings, it would be great to just build county housing. And that way, people with general assistance, we know that they're taking those $700 vouchers because you live in county housing.
Thank you. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. These discussions are important, and we, we are, it's true. I'm not going to comment on what has been said. I've been pretty consistent about how many mandated services we have and how many non-mandated services we have. I know exactly what they are. It is mandated by statute that this, and it's been well documented, that this program exists. What the statutes are silent about is the amount. The amount in any given month or year, or what type of form those amounts take. I, I would only say that we need to exercise, we always need to exercise caution in, related to mandated services and non-mandated services. Growing government spending with few verifiable metrics and that show untraceable success is a problem. Doesn't mean that's what's being promoted here. They're saying if you start expanding some of these things and you're not mandated to do it, you better have verifiable statistics that show you're going to have success. If you don't, then you're going to fall by the wayside, just like everybody else. And you're going to go, we keep dumping money into this stuff, and we're not getting any success. It's a simple matter of government believing sometimes, on occasion, that dispersing dollars to potentially drive full or heavy payer mentality as opposed to subsidy is the prudent thing to do. All I'm saying is we have to be very, very careful. We go down a road where we're providing money for food banks, it could be a black hole. I'm not saying it will be. I'm saying it could be. I'm saying what, what all of our, the commissioners up here have communicated have, have merit. I'm saying we need more information. Why can't, why can't the government force guaranteed minimum income levels in a county? Why can't they do that? Arguably, they can, but when they do, what does, what happens then? Is it a misguided idea? I don't know. But I'll tell you this, because the government is, if they did it, a government is forcing free market changes that it ultimately can't control. All I'm saying is we have to exercise extreme caution. And one of the reasons I think we have to exercise extreme caution, the final reason, is because we do not know what next year's budget is going to look like. We don't know what assessments are going to look like. And we also know that we reduced our levy lid because of the changes that were made in assessments. We have no idea what the assessments are going to look like next year. I guarantee they don't look like what they looked like last year. I will guarantee that. There are all kinds of unknowns here. We start, all I'm saying is we start talking about expanding government programs. We need to exercise caution. We need, as Commissioner Borg, as Chair Borgson pointed out, a little bit more information would be quite valuable at this point, I think. So I'm happy to have these discussions. I'm glad Commissioner Kavanaugh had the hearing, the subcommittee hearing last week. I'm glad we're talking about this stuff now. All I'm saying is, and I'm not putting on a, you know, a right-wing Ronald Reagan hat here. I don't have to. I'm saying we have to exercise caution. That's all. Madam Chair, that's all I had. Thank you.
No other, Commissioner Morgan?
What Mike Friend, Commissioner Friend just said, I agree with. And keep in mind the Governor's Committee of 32, and I have attended some conferences where he's spoke. There's going to be some serious changes that are going to be proposed in this short legislative session that are definitely going to have an effect on county government in possibly a dramatic way, for sure. So I think we do need to be very cautious about our finances. That's all.
Thank, thank you. Anyone else? And again, again, for, for me, I agree with what is being talked about. But what I would encourage is again, listening to what you bring us as data. Because we don't want to rush, if you will, to just throwing money at problems without really knowing what that data is. And, you know, I, I'm not into growing government either, and that goes for all offices and departments within county government. We have to know where our lane is, and we need to stay there. If in good times we can, which we have, increased the things we need to increase to, to accomplish or to, to implement what we're mandated to implement, I think we've done an absolute good job of that. And again, Melissa, I think you brought good information to us. And I think we can continue to look at that data or gather that data even more so. Because that's how we should be making decisions, is based on, on that data of need. So, thank you. Commissioner Garcia?
To the end of the topic of future fiscal unknown kind of realms that we foresee, but don't know what exactly they're going to look like. But tying it back to your current proposal, I think you have taken an incremental approach, a conservative approach, as you stated, towards trying to help people a little bit more, but not taking such large leaps either to the end of your budget and the county's budget. So, you know, there's a $50 increase in the exception. So people have more discretionary funding. There's a $100 increase in the rental assistance that is still slightly below the HUD rate, but nonetheless would provide a slightly higher rate than, than prior year. So I appreciate your incremental approach and your consciousness of trying to stay within budget and take conservative steps towards helping people more, but still keeping the budget in mind. So, thank you.
With that, no other lights. Anyone else wishing to speak during this public hearing? And I keep the public hearing open, correct, until?
I think you could. However, the agenda, the agenda request item asks for the public hearing to be closed, which is also okay. So the matter before you is for today to do the public hearing, and then the agenda request item says to close the public hearing.
Okay, so if we close the public hearing and it comes for a vote on December 5th, then that is when Commissioner Kavanaugh can bring his amendment to?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. So we'll, we'll take a look at that for Melissa because what she raised was whether or not you needed to have a second public hearing. We've never had that question presented to us before, but we'll take a look at it and follow up with Melissa so that she can bring it back in the appropriate manner before the board.
Okay, because I, I, sorry, Commissioner Kavanaugh. I just remember in the past that amendments were brought on the day that we voted. And I don't remember another public hearing other than we actually at one time did extend the public hearing because of items that people wanted to, to alter from what we had before us. So that would be a good thing to look at to make sure we do it right. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yeah, just as a point for the reason for the hearing is to entertain discussion of possible adjustments to these yet to be adopted guidelines. So it would be logical that we would have the opportunity to make those changes. We can do it either today or when we come back to this. But it needs to be understood here that we can make these changes regardless of whether or not we do it today or when it comes back. That's, that's the understanding of the board. And that's where we need to go.
So again, I think that if I close the public hearing, that then the question becomes when you bring an, an item on the 5th, then do we need to have another public hearing? Or he has brought the issue today, and it will just be voted on, on the 5th. And that's where, that's where I think we need to just have clarity from our county attorney which, which way we go. So, so I am going to close the public hearing and bring anybody who has any items that they want us to consider on the 5th. Please get those in ASAP.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. With that, the public hearing is closed, and we will see this back on December 5th. We will now move to our committees, the first being our budget as presented. Next is a resolution authorizing an award of $159,400 to hear mindfulness program for project operating costs for a one-year period. And this is out of my ARPA allocation. And so I would ask for a motion to approve. I'm sorry. Sure. There was a motion by Commissioner Rogers and seconded by Commissioner Morgan.
Nicole Leclair, down the road, Sarpy County. I, I have a background in yoga and Tai Chi. I've taught for decades and studied it for decades. And I think it's great that you want to do this. My only concern is the cost of it. Because that works out to over $3,000 a week. I know there's a $30,000 initial fee. But including that, the whole total divided by 52 is $3,000 a week and $600 a class. So I, and you just talked about verifiable success. And looking on their website, I can't see any studies exactly of what they're doing. So I, I think it would be interesting to have those reports regularly of how that's going. And just to hear how they're adjusting. I know they started in 18 or 19, from what I read. And just to hear how they're adjusting for the pandemic, working with kids. And I just want to go to like, you know, mindfulness is wonderful. I'm a big fan, of course. But if you don't have your basic needs met, like a roof over your head and food and clothing in a safe place, it's hard to have that. So that's all I'm saying on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Be sure if our finance director, Lori Persch, had anything she wanted to comment on in case she did concern this item, because her name's there.
This has been put through finance and through Deloitte, by the way, just like everybody else's for the last year and a half. It's ARPA dollars, yeah. 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 Lori?
I don't have any comments on, on this one, but thank you, Commissioner Morgan.
Okay. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Was just raised. We do have, and Lori, you could probably clarify this for us, a $50,000 request for my ARPA allocation going for emergency food assistance for the holidays. Lori, that's coming up, I think, in the next agenda, is that right?
Yes.
And that'll be, you know, directly to people for meeting their holiday food needs. It's already been budgeted by the Heartland Hope Mission people. So they're using it now for Thanksgiving, but I think it'll be used as well. And I think they estimated that that will provide holiday meals for... that that will provide holiday meals for something like 7,000 families, a lot of people. So we're trying to use our resources as judiciously as we can and, you know, meet as many of the community needs. But food, you're right, is critical, and we're doing what we can. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on this agenda item?
Larry Store, 501.5 Lafayette Avenue, Oklahoma, 68132. We're still under mindfulness. You know, once again, here is it appears to be part of a national association of this and that's that come up with all these best practices for molding our children's behavior. And they're asking money to do that. Operational budget money, $30,000 shows up a couple of different times. And I'm thinking, when are we going to stop funding organizations as 501(c)(3)'s to do operational budgets, things that any business needs to do themselves, fund themselves or get financing from a bank? We're not a bank. Our federal government is broke. What are you gonna do when these people come back for more money? You can't go to the federal government unless they borrow money from the Chinese. Why do you want to do that? It's time to start saying no to some of these things. We can't necessarily legislate our children's feelings. We can't make them feel good. That's for somebody else to do. I think the word is parents. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? There was a motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Louise?
Louis, he managed 2709 Dewey Avenue. I have the cost schedule here with the amounts that total $159,400. I think this is for a mindfulness program. That's way too much money. This is just a handout when you have $30,000 for a one-time fee. Think that if you're going to have the one-time fee, you definitely need to have them show that every time there's opportunity to participate on these sessions, that there is an effort to bring in participants and that participants actually show up and take advantage of the mindfulness program. So even if this program already has a roster of clients that are going to participate, I think that $30,000 one-time fee is just unnecessary. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item? There was a motion in the second. Please vote. Next item is a resolution approving an amendment, addendum, to the current contract with Forvis LLP for external auditing services in the amount of $48,700. This item is budgeted. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next, we'll move to administrative services. There's two items. The first, resolution authorizing the use of a construction manager at risk for the mental health unit capital improvement project at the Douglas County Adult Correction Facility. Is there a motion I'll make that motion. Is there a second? Motion by Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments on this item?
I wondered if you'd testify first, because you may answer my questions before I?
Yeah, let's have Jeff present first.
Jeff McGill, Douglas County Public Properties. We placed this on the agenda as this is the next step for the construction and how we, the procurement and delivery method. Traditionally, we have gone to the design, bid, and build. The construction manager at risk has a lot of factors to this approach. Researching this, per the state statute, we need approval from the board. And if we get approval from the board, the next step is to form a selection committee. The CM at risk is qualified-based, so we will get the most qualified firm to handle the project. There's early involvement with this approach. They come on board early during the design concept and work with the architect engineers. The greatest benefit that I see is the real-life cost estimating throughout the design. And they will, I guess, the last piece is allowing the guaranteed maximum price of our budget. It's guaranteed if they go over, they will have to absorb the cost. So with that, I would recommend approval of the C construction manager at risk.
Okay. And hang on one second, Hal. I have two lights. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Jeff, I've been here since 2015. I've seen some projects go forward. The only one that I know has this kind of a structure was the Kids Jail project. I haven't seen this used for a Douglas County capital construction project before, particularly the appointment of this committee, which has a couple blanks for the commissioners. Has this been discussed in a board meeting or in a committee meeting of the board?
We briefly mentioned the CM at risk at one of the board meetings. However, we did use this approach during COVID for the Health Center and Correction Facility.
Yeah, I was, you know, familiar with a lot of that stuff. The only one that I've seen this kind of a structure was the one that actually was an arm's length from the county, done through the building commission. My experience with Douglas County of this is, we handle our own. We do our construction management through your department, and we don't have outside consultants. I don't know Ron Butcher. I've never dealt with him. He doesn't have any standing as an official Douglas County person. But this seems to be a departure from that, and a brief discussion, I don't recall any discussion, but a brief discussion is probably not adequate for a 30-plus million-dollar construction project. And this might be something that we take a look at. I'm not saying that this isn't something that we want to pursue, but as a case of first impression today, with Commissioner Boyle absent today, we might want to look at this and even take a hard look at it, using some of our committee structure to determine that we're going to do this this way in a, you know, kind of a process, rather than just throw it on the agenda. I haven't seen this at all. Before, I saw it the other day as an email. This was never discussed with me by you or anybody else. And I don't know that I'm alone there with the board on this. So I'm just putting that out there, because I think it might be something that maybe the, as long as it's under the Administrative Services Committee, the Administrative Services Committee, you know, might want to actually discuss. Has this been set for hearing?
Pardon me?
Has this been set for hearing with the Administrative Services Committee? It's on here as an Administrative Services Committee proposal?
No, it hasn't, and that's my fault.
Oh, I see. Okay. Well, you know, I guess that's kind of why we have committees, and maybe this is something that we would have a discussion. It's a huge project. Like I said, 30-plus million dollars, and just to kind of rush it through like this at the last minute with no discussion, eh, might raise some questions. We're having these difficulties with another project that had some of the same hallmarks. And so that would be my concern, I guess, in utilizing this and not having maybe any discussion of what do we do with the entire allocation? Is it our best purpose to rush through a 30-plus million dollar thing, or is there, you know, a less expensive alternative that would be just as good or even better? These are all discussions that I don't think that we have time for, maybe today. But in the fullness of time, we might want to have, before we rush into setting up kind of a unique construction manager at risk to make recommendations to the board. I think that's your job. And as I see, you're now the public properties director, so I, as a commissioner, would appreciate, if you're going to propose this, you know, some briefing that says, this is what I would like to do before I, you know, just have two resolutions to rubber stamp, I guess, at the last minute. Just going forward, if we're going to do a 30-plus million dollar project, I think recent history teaches us that it's best to do this in a cautious and transparent way.
Time?
This isn't that.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeff, thanks for the information. What I was going to ask you are, not trying to paint you into a corner here, what I'm, I'm asking this question, I hope, for a good reason. Are either of these, well, let's take the first one. Is this particular resolution predicated on the fact that $33 million has been earmarked? So let me give you an example of where I'm going. What happens if previous boards had earmarked, and by the way, an earmark's different than an allocation or appropriation. It's different, especially with this board. It's different. We've earmarked $33 million. What if we earmarked five? Would you be doing the same thing today, short of actually going to an Administrative Services Committee hearing, which I sort of agree with Commissioner Kavanaugh on, but I'll get to that later? What if it was a $5 million project? Would you be doing the very same thing today?
No.
You wouldn't? Why?
It's based on specialized projects, smaller projects, it's more manageable through the bid.
And a $5 million project is a smaller project?
Yes.
What about a $20 million project?
Maybe on the curve, either way.
So my point is, you could be doing the same thing today if we were building the, if we were thinking about building a $20 million building?
Could.
Okay.
But in this case, the guarantee maximum price that the contractor is going to guarantee, that's important to us and the board.
Very good.
And the other method does not do that.
Very good. Here's my final question, and I might make some, within five minutes, make a comment later. Does this particular resolution limit our flexibility, our capability? So what happens with this board, in its infinite wisdom, comes back later on and says, you know what? We're not spending the entire $33 million. We're spending 25. Does this preclude it? Does that, does that, does this particular resolution cause a problem in that regard?
I wouldn't think so, but we're designing for the $33.7 million project. So if we're going to step back, we need to know that during design immediately.
Okay. So, I said final question, but it wasn't. So, but you said something that leads me to this question. If this board, again, and it's an infinite wisdom, if this particular resolution passes, and this board comes back at a later date, and we actually get a preponderance of the board to say, you know what, we want a variety of options available to us, do we have to go back and strike a resolution like this or get it off the books before we can actually make changes? Because that hinges on my decision today.
No, it's fluid. During the design, the fee, the construction manager at risk is on board. They're together. So we can adjust to changes more efficiently than we can the traditional way. Because we have the CM at risk in with us, he can adjust budgets and try to meet whatever the board wishes. Sometimes that's difficult.
Okay. So if an idiot like me makes, gets people to follow him and say, you know, we do need to make some changes, because it's been my contention, and this board has heard me say it, it's been my contention from the very beginning, I don't want to spend the entire $33 million. I don't want to, I don't want to spend $33 million and find out, five months after that, that construction costs and all kinds of other things are pushing us into a situation that we weren't, you know, banking on.
I agree.
So, I guess the point is, as long as something like this is not going to preclude us from making decisions like that later on, I guess I'd vote to move this forward. If I think that I have some flexibility as a person that's actually holding those fiscal purse strings, I want that flexibility, right, Jeff?
You're correct.
I mean, I don't want to be in a position, three weeks from now, and I don't think any board member would, to say, oh, we got two resolutions we got to back out of, and now we have to change all kinds of things, not just one. So, anyway, that's.
I think it helps the cause.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Time, Commissioner Garcia?
First, just to clarify, since my name is on the agenda and under Administrative Services, that I did not put this on the agenda, and I did not know about the items until I saw the preliminary agenda on Thursday or Friday. But that's, I understand the perspective from Jeff and staff to want to get the task done that's been placed before them and the tight timeline that they see before them as well in regards to ARPA. So I'm not mad at you for doing your job, but I would agree that a little bit of discussion would have been good before seeing this on the agenda. With that being said, let me go back real quick to some of what was being said. If there were any change to the design, if it was scaled down a bit, anything like that, would that be better done during the design process, rather than once it's at the CM at risk kind of stage?
Yes, but the CM at risk is going to join here quickly during the design phase. We're in programming schematics right now.
Yeah.
So, yes, sooner the better.
Would it be fair to say that we're currently in the design stage?
Almost.
Almost, okay. And who would be that person to engage in relation to the design?
Carlson Westervanda.
Okay. That's what I thought, just confirming. A few notes on kind of where I'm at, and this is just me. Yeah, I wouldn't mind a discussion on both this item and a few others that have been brought up in recent weeks. We just approved the design, the architect, right? That was only one or two weeks ago or so. So that was very recent. If this happens to be delayed today, then I would. If this happens to be delayed today, then, then I would look to having an Administrative Services Committee meeting on this proposal before us, but also add other agenda items that are related to the larger project that have been brought up as well, in regards to staffing and operations and forecasting the cost of that moving forward. Other options that could be considered as far as, you know, what is a model with sixty beds, with forty-two beds? What does a model look like that's a little scaled down so that it's below the full thirty-three million, so that if there is additional costs, inflation, et cetera, you know, there's some more cushion there? Again, I'm not making a hard pitch today on any of that, but, you know, there hasn't really been a setting where we could actually delve into those topics and actually feel content that we did at least delve into those topics once at minimum. So, on top of that, finding the, ultimately, I'd like to find the right setting to also delve into the bigger picture. You know, we talk about twenty percent of our jail population being homeless, forty-two to forty-seven percent having a mental health diagnosis. You know, at a systems level, how are we looking at, you know, preventing people from even making it to the jail to begin with that are homeless, that have mental health diagnosis, consulting with all the homeless shelters in the larger community, on their perspective on all of this? You know, how can we reach that population? Of course, we want to do the best we can while they're under our care at corrections, but at a systems level, you know, how are we collectively trying to tackle these broader issues as well? Again, that is not necessarily your job, Jeff, because you are the buildings guy and the properties guy, but those are some other supplemental questions that I'm also having to reflect on, me personally. So, I'll loop back around in my next time. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize.
Commissioner Morgan?
Jeff is going to ask you, I think this is about a thirty thousand-square-foot facility is somewhat the plan?
I think it's thirty-eight? Thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven thousand. So we're at somewhere around nine-hundred-and-twenty dollars, thereabouts, a square foot to build this facility. And I know that the new medical facility is much more sophisticated with a lot of plumbing and everything in each room that was built out of Village Point, was under six-hundred dollars a square foot, built in the last few years and completed, and quite a structure, and I've gone through it. So I'm hopeful that we'll see the numbers maybe change a little bit. The other thing I don't think that's in the proposal, I didn't see, is what we might need in the parking area also, which kind of concerns me. And the other part of it is, we don't know for sure who's going to be operating this facility. I think we're going to go out for bids on that, and that's being prepared, hopefully, as we speak. And they're not involved in the design, so I'm going to design a coffee shop, but I don't know who's going to operate it. And then somebody may come in and say, "Why would you build it this way? Because it's not efficient for me." And there's a concern that I have on that, because if I'm, you know, going to have somebody operating, that kind of worries me a bit, that they should be somewhat on this list. And I'm also, and I'll say it publicly, and I'll probably be saying it a lot, I really have concerns about staffing that kind of facility at our correction, because I know, and I've had talks with some people at UNMC, and they tell me that's going to be a dramatic, challenging proposition, staffing this facility at our correction facility. And I know we want to do some of this and complete the project. So that's another concern budgeting-wise, which Commissioner Garcia touched on too, about the budgeting and going forward. Lastly, I would just say one thing, and I've had zero discussion with this Commissioner about this and seeing this today. I'd like to be sure that my friend is one of the Commissioners that's on this, and he may not like me suggesting that, but that's too bad. I do want to see him involved in, in that. So, I just have some strong reservations, not toward your department, which has done outstanding jobs in the past, and I'm certain you will in the future, but those are just some of my concerns at this time with this project.
I can answer one of those questions. Parking, when we did the acceptance of the project, the parking was outside of the scope. I think there was a two-million-dollar estimate for additional parking.
Now, is that, that's not in the thirty-three million?
Correct.
So I just want everyone to hear that, because that's something there. I understand from questions I've asked, supposedly, all the furnishings are in that number, meaning beds, the special door handles, and all the things that go into that security.
Yes.
That's in there?
Yep.
Okay. But not the parking, so I want everyone to hear that, because we face that issue a little bit with the youth center, and we're still working at that diligently, I know, that issue. All right, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Jeff, again, thanks for the information, and thanks for bearing with me on my, as, as I brainstormed while you were up here. Look, in previous, based on our actions in previous board meetings, and I'm not lecturing you, I'm kind of, I'm kind of telling, based on some of the dialogue here, where we're going, what my thoughts are right now. And I actually got a chance to visit with Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Garcia about this a little bit. These resolutions, I wouldn't say are innocuous, but based on what Jeff has laid out to me, I, I don't think they're showstoppers. Here's why I say that. We're looking at a construction manager, and Senator, or Commissioner Garcia laid this out a little bit for me this morning. The idea between a construction manager and a risk model and a general manager model, I don't think they're necessarily showstoppers for me in them, in itself, those aren't. I don't think we're addressing with that fiscal appropriation. I just don't. And I think that if we were, we step back later on, and we put the brakes on everybody and say, "Look, I'm not saying that's going to happen. I'm saying I don't think that's what this does." Second thing is, the lack of Administrative Services hearing is a concern. However, for me, practically, not necessarily a showstopper. I don't know how many times I've been in here, and I see a sheriff's item on the dock. No, no, I could have hearings every month, but I don't in criminal, in, in the Criminal Justice Committee. There's all, we deal with things all the time as a board that don't go through hearings. Doesn't mean it's right, it just means it happens. So I, I don't think that's something that I have a tremendous amount of heartburn over. There is a Commissioner missing. We've, we've been down this road before, everybody's busy, there's all kinds of things happening. That concerns me a little bit. But the bottom line is, the way Jeff described it, it didn't make me feel a ton better, but neither of these resolutions precludes this board from seeking options in regard to flexibility. It does not. And if it did, then I'd stop both of these in their tracks. I'm not hearing that. The odds are, we're not going to spend five million dollars, right? We can't do that. The odds are, we're going to spend somewhere between twenty and thirty million dollars. All I want is flexibility, and I want this board to understand that. It doesn't mean I make the call. It means that if we're approaching this stuff, and we're staring down the barrel of a fiscal issue, we can pivot, we can move. That's all I'm asking for. And it doesn't appear to me, right now, that doing these two particular things precludes us from doing that. I would submit to you that I think we could, as Commissioner Garcia laid out, be provided with a couple of different options. I don't, I don't know, maybe, maybe that's going to cost us more money, too. Maybe I'm just too naive. But that appropriation, in my, in my mind, has not been made yet. I keep talking about this, and everybody's heard me, there's a difference between what I did five months ago in earmarking thirty-three million dollars and appropriating it. We have not done that yet. The day that happens, you'll know, I'll raise my hand, and the people that I represent in Northern Douglas County will know it, too. My guess is, I'm not going to be sitting around with an appetite five year, five months from now, with an appetite to increase levy lids or float a bond mechanism. I don't think I'm going to have that appetite. Now, you're going, "Oh, Mike, you're really cool. You're not the only one." No, I'm not. But based on three hundred people showing up a month and a half ago and saying, "Our property taxes are out of control," I think you know what folks like me end up doing. We go, "There's going to be change coming, and some of it we can't control, but we can control some of this change. All I'm saying is, I'd like some flexibility." And if I have to go to five other Commissioners and say, "We need a little bit more flexibility. I have a feeling we're not going to be able to pay for this," then we'll do that. Madam Chair, that's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
With that being said, there's a part of me that feels it would be maybe good mentioning Commissioner Boyle not being here, plus some other questions we've all raised, to maybe lay this over for a couple of weeks. I think she's gone next week also, is my understanding, and maybe if that's not detrimental, I think that might be a good thing. So I would tend to make that motion. And we can let, maybe before I do it, I want to be sure some of the people get to talk first. So, it's just my thought.
There are no other lights here. I know that we have speakers, and I'm going to ask Al if he has anything to add to the presentation before I get to those that want to speak.
Good morning. I think it's still morning.
Yep.
Alpha Vonda, Fifty-Sixty Dodge Street. We, we did a study, and then we did a second study. At the end of that second study, we met with all of you in a, in a, a meeting room up on the ninth floor, I think. And we talked about the size of the project, we talked about the cost of the project, we talked about what was in it, and there was a staffing presentation by Mike. So, the, the cost, the cost per square foot, the total project budget, the impact on furniture, and all the accessories that went from construction cost to total project budget was, was addressed. And I understand, that was months ago, and it's recalls, not necessarily the greatest after, after the passage of time. I think you can have a successful project whether you do Construction Manager at Risk or whether you go with the traditional method. I think that can be a successful project. We just finished a twenty, twenty-two-million-dollar project for the state of Nebraska, I mentioned this last time, which was a mental health facility, which was just done under the traditional design bid build. So that, that was, that was done on that. I think one of the things I keep hearing over and over is cost control and inflation, and, and, you know, what's the future going to hold? And so, the Construction Manager at Risk is a delivery method to get a general contractor early in the process. The advantage of getting a, a general contractor early in the process, rather than waiting till the end of the design process, is that the Construction Manager at Risk works with the design team to control costs, to figure out what, what construction method is best. What should we use, steel versus a concrete superstructure, for instance? So, the Construction Manager at Risk at the, at the end of the design process, then gets subcontractor bids in a competitive way, and provides you with the general, excuse me, a guaranteed maximum price. That's the difference. The difference is, you get that guaranteed maximum price at the end of his subcontractor bids, rather than, and you get the contractor of your choice, based upon a competitive process, where you're saying, "Have you done this type of project before? What is your track record?" So you have confidence, knowing through the CMR at Risk, that you have a contractor of your choice, early in the process, looking out for your, for your, your fiscal conservatives in getting the, the project designed in a way that, that's budget-conscious, rather than the other method, which, which again, I, I think can still be successful, but you don't know who your contractor's going to be, and there could be some cost considerations. If you don't get good competition, for instance, we, we've had projects outstate where you only get one bid, and there's no competition. I think you're going to get competition here, but again, it's, it's, I think it can be successful, in my opinion, it can be successful either way. And I'm not proposing that, but I think your Public Properties is saying, "On a project this big, we think you ought to have this assurance, this, this method." I'm seeing, I'm seeing people working on a project for City Papillion right now, I'm seeing they're, they want to go and see a, see a risk process on a six-point-five-million-dollar project. So, it's, it's, it's kind of gotten down to that level where cer- certain entities want to have more, more of a comfort factor. That's the difference in the process. And again, I'll, I'll be here if you want to ask, ask me any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Myers, Director of Corrections. I wanted to, I know I can answer a couple of Commissioner Morgan's questions regarding the staffing. I, I don't anticipate that this project will change the level of staffing as far as the medical and mental health staff, which is what I'm presuming folks at UNMC were commenting on. We have, we will, you know, the amount of inmates we have in our custody probably is not going to be impacted by this project. Whether that goes up or down from today's levels may happen, but that would happen with or without this project. The percentage of people who are mentally ill, the forty-seven percent that I reported to you earlier, will probably be the same in three years when this project, facility is open. This is, this is not really an expansion of the jail. This is building a care center for the people who are already in our custody that we don't currently have. These are moving people from where they are in the jail to a, a more therapeutic space in the jail. And when those, when those beds are vacated, you know, I hope to close those housing units as often as possible to save the taxpayers money. In terms of the participation in the design, I think we have had throughout all of the, we have done, I, I think, three different studies so far, and we've had WellPath staff involved in all three, and they're continuing at the table now. And what's important for, I think, a distinction is, yes, we are going out to bid soon for our medical and mental health care. Even if we weren't, we would still be going out to bid. Our con, our, we're out of extensions. If we didn't, if we chose to do our final extension with WellPath, we would have to put this out to bid before this project is done anyway. What I want to make sure that everyone understands is, in, in the correctional healthcare setting, typically, even if we went with a new company, most of the staff are retained by the new company, and they continue to work at the Douglas County Department of Corrections. They have a new employer. They'll have different, we will, we will be choosing, not necessarily based upon the staff that are present in the building, but on the corporate support that they're going to get, the resources that they're going to have behind them for the com, for the vendor that we, we choose. And so, you know, the... And so, you know, the vendors will come and go, this facility will transcend vendors. And so, we have mental health professionals, um, that have been involved from day one. We have researched a lot of other facilities and visited facilities that have done this. And, you know, so I want, I wanna assure that I don't see that there's a significant change in the, the mental health or medical staffing. It's the same people, they're just gonna be served in a better spot than what we currently have to offer. And we will continue to work with and get the input of mental, mental health and medical professionals as we continue down the design path.
Ask a question?
Yes, Commissioner Morgan, well, no, you have to wait, 'cause that's your last time. You had spoken twice already. Uh, we'll move, we will move to Al.
Good morning, Commissioners, Madam Chair. I won't reiterate, but I think you recall, my view is that I think we do need to address the mental health circumstances within the incarcerated population. I think that the ARPA funding in a very ma- major way can accomplish that. But it's clear that this expansion that's planned was not, ARPA was not COVID-induced. It can't be proven that today's problem, solved by the current proposal before the board, started because of COVID. That's what the ARPA funds were promulgated to address, or the continuing COVID-related circumstances. Hope that you all take a very good look at this concept. The fifty million can be reprogrammed to, I wanna adopt Commissioner Garcia's infinite wisdom and the comments that he made a minute ago. There's a lot of potential. You've got Council Bluffs just announcing a huge mental health facility. Community Alliance has just got one going, Children's Hospital's got one going. Two years from now, you're not gonna be able to find people to do the things that you're thinking about this facility maybe doing, without a great deal of stress, rather than what Commissioner Morgan said in terms of staffing. So I've studied this very carefully. What, uh, Commissioner friend you have here is a set of resolutions that further limit, that constrict, that narrow your options. Does anybody know what this person at risk contract is gonna cost? Has that been vetted in a committee hearing so that this option or other options were looked at? I agree with what Mr. Provandra said, that this project, if it does come to pass and isn't clawed back, can be accomplished either way. But the evaluation of what a Construction Mana- Manager at Risk is gonna cost you and how you're gonna pay for that, if there are changes made and you narrow this from thirty-eight or thirty-two or thirty million to some different deployment of those funds to address the concerns that you all have, I think is important. I think that the second proposal, the second resolution in front of you, starts off with, uh, not naming two commissioners, but if you look at the rest of the composite, who decided the composition of the committee? What open discussion occurred with other options? It looks like to me, you've got Fox in the Chicken Coop all put into one room. And they will control what the Construction Manager at Risk says and does, because he or she or that company will be sitting with them on the plan that's being evaluated and on which bids are being proposed, so the design won't change. There'll be no options. This further limits any change or any redirection of the ARPA funds to, to your objective, to the one that I agree, I share with you all. But I think the construction idea of building a building that's not COVID-connected risks not only the clawback, the parking garage issue, how do you pay two million plus plus and maintain it over time? Um, I, I think your discussion's probably been the most enlightened one I've heard the last four or five months in terms of concern. So perhaps, Commissioner Garcia, it would be in order for at least a couple of weeks to have a, an actual hearing to look at all of the questions that have been asked today and vet better answers than I've heard today. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Larry Store, five-one-five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six-eight-one-three-two. Wow, plenty of language sometimes makes a difference. Fox in the Chicken House. Chicken Lincoln is falling, shit, the sky is falling. Well, I don't know, I've got some friends in construction. What the hell is a manager at risk? Who, who would use that word? If I have a manager, I don't want a manager that's at risk. Who is at risk? Well, maybe you guys are. Maybe the whole state is, because have you heard the word clawback? Some of the politicians out east use that word. When you don't use it for what it's necessary to be used for related to COVID, we might clawback to get the money back. Well, when they do that, then your house of cards is gonna fall, because you've spent all this money to all these people all over the place. Very few of them are here, but they're at risk too. You're at risk. There was a small town in Michigan that recalled seven commissioners. Five of them did get recalled, two of them resigned. You're at risk. Let it happen soon. And then I'm at risk. Hell, I can't afford my property taxes now. You're gonna have to come to us for more money when the other people lose theirs. So what do you do, take my house? What are you gonna do on all these high-rise apartment buildings you're building? Don't make it, because people aren't coming because you built it. Thank you.
Stop it.
Luis?
Luis, here, minus twenty-seven oh-nine Dewey Avenue. Commissioners, I am your Construction Manager at Risk. Just listen to me and, uh, you'll, I won't mislead you. Uh, no, but, you see this? This is a project management, management chart that was presented November eighth, twenty-eighteen, D.C. Correction Center update. Now, if you get this person managing to present this document or this chart, I might agree to it. But I, I've become accustomed not seeing project management charts before you, so I, I will oppose, uh, the, uh, resolution. Last time you got
Cost estimates.
For the correctional facility. You were told that to actually physically create, come on dude.
Luis, don't be so rude, man, come on.
I, I already told them that when I come up here, I'm gonna use the, okay, well, can you please put this out there?
You could submit your stuff ahead of time and have it ready, that could help.
It's already on your website. That's just where I got it from. I got five minutes, right?
Yeah, three.
Three, okay. Last, last time you were told about actually physically creating the facility, it would be around twenty-five thousand dollars. And that was for, uh, thirty-seven thousand and ninety feet. Uh, and then everything else with, uh, surveys, testing, furnishing, commissioning, it would amount to, um, twenty-seven thousand nine hundred. And then, you were told that, uh, there'd be eight percent inflation to midpoint construction, two million, then another three million at ten percent. So, the total construction for the facility would be thirty-two thousand, thirty-three thousand, uh, thirty-three million. Okay, so, uh, you already know the variables and the unknowns. Uh, so I agree with, uh, the commissioners who are saying that this needs to be scaled down, so that, uh, you don't run into, uh, you know, um, spending more than what you've already cali, uh, allocated. So the facility, I think, would, uh, this project would be, would benefit from, um, and then with your uncertainties that you think you still have, a smaller by square foot project would be beneficial. Probably around, uh, thirty-five thousand square foot, thirty-four thousand square foot feet. Uh, and that's what I have to say, thank you.
Anyone, anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item?
Ed Fogarty, five-twenty-one North Thirty Eighth Street, speaking as a taxpayer. I'm opposed, obviously, to remain consistent with the, uh, high risk of clawback that is going to occur. But what would be very important in addressing this motion, uh, or resolution itself is the need for a, uh, a lawyer, a legal consultant, for the Construction Manager, for Provanda, uh, for everybody who's gonna touch this, because the biggest risk that a risk manager's gonna have, and all of us are gonna have, is that there will be a clawback, I've told you, four out of five times gonna happen. Maybe five out of five times happen. And like I said, I'm, all the time I advise clients. I would turn to Mr. Provanda, he'd come in to me four years ago. I'd have said, "Oh, uh, Provanda, you got this problem. That money is, uh, earmarked and you can't spend it on a jail, and you can't spend it on a medical facility that costs thirty million dollars. Uh, and so you're at real high risk, and I'd advise you not to do it." But he didn't listen to me. And I get the feeling that your guys aren't listening to me too. I wish seven were here, 'cause it would be my last argument before the Supreme Court, which has seven. And they usually, but, uh, you can't do it. You're gonna have, on this committee, you're gonna have commissioners who have already been taken down the primrose path by committee on the Kitty Jail. So unless you do put Mike on it, elbow to elbow with, uh, Kavanaugh, you're not going to have anything but a hallelujah chorus there, a real hallelujah chorus. What you need is a devil's advocate on your committee. First of all, number one, don't even approve this, this thing. Get back to looking about spending a lot of money on the jail, a lot of money in Forty Second. You can do some construction, a million on each project is a freebie under the, uh, under the regs. Keep the money in-house too. I've heard a complaint about you can't keep track of all the people outside that you might wanna give money to. Keep the money in-house. Mike Myers won't let a dime not be spent for the betterment of his, uh, inmates. Up at Forty Second Street, I'm a big admirer of, uh, Doc Kozlacz, they wouldn't let a dime go unspent. But what you need, what you need on that committee, if you get past, uh, and, and this resolution and get to forming the committee, uh, you need a, you, you need a devil's advocate. I'd call Commissioner Kavanaugh, who's a good one from the commission, and you need a lawyer on there too. And I don't mean the county attorney or Deloitte, 'cause they haven't served you well on risk assessment. Get a retired Supreme Court judge, Bill Conley, Dave, uh, Landfair, they might cost a lot of money. I'd be your devil's advocate for, for free. I really would. I mean, just buy me a sub sandwich at the meetings. Uh, and I will try and walk you through this. And remember, this risk is gonna come down a long time. Four years into the future, five years into the future, because this is being litigated down in Alabama right now. This is being a political conver, uh, political problem. And even at the Republican debate the other night, they talked about clawback, they're gonna clawback against the frauds, the people that created phony companies. They're gonna, they're gonna, uh, go collect, uh, they're gonna get judgment for a hundred thousand against a fraudster who spent the money already. Wait till the next, till the next administration, whoever it is, has big plums like, "Ooh, fifty million missed in Douglas County, four hundred missed down in Alabama." And four years from now, well, Provanda, make sure your contractors get big bonds. And make sure you try and cover something that will be by some cranky taxpayer or a cranky Treasury Department guy that's gonna call it misappropriation of federal funds. It's not the nicey-nicey thing that we're talking about here, 'cause we're all civilized, we're all gentlemen and ladies. And we all gonna have a happy Thanksgiving.
Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna, um, you know, go along with at least the mention of a potential, in-depth conversation slash hearing on not just this topic, but any other pending questions out there around the bigger project that, um, of which can be discussed at a committee hearing. So, before I get to that, um, like I mentioned, you know, to Jeff, I'll mention it to Mike, Mr. Provandra, you know, the fact that somebody has questions or wants to explore a slight branch or deviation from the core idea doesn't mean we're against you, you, or you, or anybody. You know, in all aspects of life, we, we make arguments, we make pitches, and we try to, you know, uh, hope that our pitch is, um, received well and, you know, move forward. Whether it's me making a pitch to my wife, or at my day job, or at this job, you know, we make pitches. And it's my job to make the best argument possible and provide all the information. And if somebody doesn't have clarity on something, maybe they've heard it before and need to be reminded, maybe it's a new aspect of information that they need, you know. I know we have heard about staffing, I know it's on page thirty-seven or forty-seven or fifty-seven about, from that packet we got at that one meeting. But if there's still questions about it, that's, that's not, we shouldn't insult those people or say, "Well, why don't you know better?" We need to make our pitches and clarify things and just help people understand the core idea. And along with some of that rich debate and discussion, sometimes ideas change slightly as well, and that's also a possibility for any idea. So, you know, uh, like I, you know, I gave, uh, Mike credit that I know at least verbally, he mentioned, you know, upwards of eight, eight officers, you know, right away with the transition, once everything was up and running with the core idea. I know it's on a piece of paper somewhere in the packet that we got that one time. But, you know, in regards to forecasting, okay, if it's eight officers right away, the forecast for that first year is what, eight times, what, a hundred thousand per salary with, with fringe and benefits? Uh, so we're probably gonna be at a million that first year, but then you're gonna try to transition down the second year and the third year as you kind of make the accommodations on staffing, like, that's the kind of like discussion and forecasting and piece of paper that I want in front of me. And alongside other, um, topics and variables that have been discussed as far as like how this idea connects to the prevention side of reaching people early before they even get the jail, what's our role with that collective broader systems work? How does this play out with other variables that we're discussing in regards to adult mental health, in regards to parking in this area? You know, there's just so, so many moving pieces right now. And, you know, if people don't agree with my own perspectives, that's fine, you know, that's okay. We all have our unique perspectives and our, um, approaches to both gaining knowledge and making the tough decisions that we need to make. So, uh, I'm gonna make a pitch to, uh, table for a couple of weeks and shoot for having an Administrative Services Committee that first week of December to discuss not just this, these two resolutions, but a few other pending questions out there. And if that flies today, then great, if it doesn't, then I And if that flies today, then great. If it doesn't, then I respect everybody's vote. So with that being said, I would move to table both B one and B two. And again, the context is that there would be an admin services committee hearing the first week of December.
There is a motion to table for two weeks and a second. Are there any discussions, discussion from anyone? I would just ask that we don't lay this over. We are, the timing I am concerned about. I think that we have had a good process with those that are intimately involved in the operations of our correction facility, in the operations of our public properties, and our expert when it comes to Al Povandra. That doesn't mean that we can't have further discussions. And I can tell you that going this route versus the traditional route, I've been here for many of those projects. And the guaranteed maximum price approach is so much better than the change order approach. And that's where you're going to go back and look. And there's many times where there was some budget overrides on projects because we didn't use the guaranteed maximum price operations of a project. It is, again, explain to all of us the reasons why we should go this route. And it is a successful route and a good route. Again, we've had, everybody keeps talking about, talking to our experts. We have our experts right here in the room that have been with us from day one on this. And so, again, delaying it for two weeks just to have another meeting to rehash what's been rehashed over and over, I just don't think is prudent. And so, again, I, I hope and ask that the board not vote for the layover and that we're able to move forward with, again, one of the, one of additional most important projects within our community and in our county. I have been an advocate from the beginning when it comes to addressing mental health issues within our incarcerated population. I think that this is the right way to, to move our services into a more higher quality, more humane and, and, and right way to address and to service those with, that are within our jail with mental health issues. And so I would hope that we don't delay this project any further, but that we allow this to move forward. And again, all of those discussions that were just talked about today can continue with all of the players that you talked about at the table in looking at and designing the project that would be best for those that we're serving through those being incarcerated within our correction facilities. So with that, there is a motion and a second. Any further comments?
Madam Chair, County Clerk Deanna, it's just, so Commissioner Garcia, you were talking about having a committee meeting in two weeks. So this is not going to necessarily be on the agenda again in two weeks, correct?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so that's why I provided context to the, before making the motion. So the context would be that I would make the action step to have an admin services committee meeting the first week of December. And so therefore, the, the actual motion itself is simply to table. So not table indefinitely, which means it would not come back ever, just to table it. But I'm also not putting a specific date to it. So after the admin services committee meeting, either the committee could forward it to the board agenda the next week, or when determined by the committee. Or four commissioners can always put something on the agenda as well. So my motion is simply to table today. And the context that my committee will have a hearing the first week of December. That's the extent of the motion.
Okay.
Please.
Okay.
And if there was a motion, okay.
Yes.
Okay, please vote.
Motion fails three to three. Commissioners Rogers, Borgerson, and Friend voting no, while their commissioners voting yes.
Okay, then go back to the original motion on the floor to approve item one. It was motion, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Sorry, I, never mind.
All right, please vote.
Motion fails three to three. Commissioners Kavanaugh, Morgan, and Garcia voting no, while their commissioners voting yes.
So we'll have to bring it back when we have another commissioner at the table. So with that, we will move on to, we can't do item two, so that will be laid over as well.
Madam Chair, I asked, do we need a motion to lay over item two then, or just, we just don't take it up?
We just don't take it up.
All right.
Teresa? The question is, how does it be brought back? I mean, this is, again, I, I know I'm going to show my frustration, but this is, this is the same games that were played with the Justice Center that's being played on this project, which was done in a wholly different way with the involvement of our experts. And so I am frustrated with all of this. But we need to know how to bring it back.
Teresa, County Attorney's Office. I'm not sure about that, but I will go ahead and I will follow up with you yet this week. So it will be today or tomorrow, and I'll give you some information. But I'm sure there's a way to do it. The ones I'm most familiar with are, you know, motion to rescind, motion to reconsider, that sort of thing. They don't quite fit on a split vote like that. And so I will go ahead and follow up with you, but I, I think there's a way we can do it.
Board of Wonder, Commissioner Rogers?
I mean, Commissioner Boyle is not here. She not being here can make a decision to bring it back if she wants to. Because she wasn't here. Because, I mean, I did that sixteen years ago on a motion, and I wasn't here, so.
With that, we will move to human resources. Weekly personnel report from civil services presented. No legislative items at this time. We do have need for an executive session. Just name it, and we're going to talk about it, so.
If we may, litigation, contract negotiation, I believe, real estate negotiations. And I don't, I apologize, Marcos, I don't recall if we have labor. Do we have labor today?
We have litigation, contract negotiations, labor negotiations, real estate negotiations, and security.
All right, is there a motion to go into executive session for those purposes stated? Before we do, I do need to announce that we will be closed Thursday, November twenty-third, and Friday, November twenty-fourth in observance of Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. The Douglas County Board of Commissioners will not meet Tuesday, November twenty-eighth. The next scheduled meeting is December fifth. The last scheduled meeting for the board is December nineteenth. And the first scheduled meeting in 2024 will be January ninth. With that, please vote.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan, to go into executive session.
...
Motion by Commissioner Borgesen to reconvene and adjourn, second by Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes four to zero. Commissioners Boyle, Rogers, and Garcia are absent. Were adjourned at 1:02 PM.